Half a day. Welcome to the Guam Legislature and Guam Congress Building. The Committee on Justice, the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's Wednesday, July 7, 2021, and the time is 5:15 PM. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Friday, June 16, Wednesday, June 23, and Thursday, June 29, and Friday, July 2, 2021. Notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on the 15th, 16th, 21st, and 29th of June, and again on the 2nd and 4th of July, and in the Pacific Daily News on June 15, 2021. This hearing is a hybrid public hearing. It's hosted by the Guam Legislature's MIS staff and the committee staff. We will receive testimony by panels of eight individuals, inclusive of both in-person and virtual attendance, trying to accommodate special accommodations where necessary. Before I came into the session hall, we had over 30 people signed up to testify, and by the looks of the crowds outside, we've probably far exceeded that at this point. My calculations is if I allow five minutes and questions from senators, we will far exceed the four hours available to us tonight. The audio must reset at 9:00. So I've decided to set another hearing date as well, in addition to the July 12 hearing, and that will be announced and advertised. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. Individuals providing testimony virtually are asked to keep their audio muted until called upon by the chair and to keep your video on at all times while you are testifying. Senators will be able to ask questions of each panel. I ask that you keep your questions limited, just so we can get through the amount of people that we have here. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of the agenda. I would ask you to refrain from personal inference as to the character or motives of any individual testifying or senators, and just generally, we will have to be patient tonight, just because it's a long night and there are a lot of people. So, welcome. I'm glad that you all are here. This bill was meant to correct an injustice -- oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead in my -- we still, we ask that after each panel is dismissed, that they kindly exit the Guam Congress Building so that those waiting outside can come in. There is a canopy and speaker set up outside also to continue to allow you to follow the hearing. I'd like to thank my colleagues for attending this evening's hearing, beginning with my co-chair of Health, Senator Sabina Paris, co-chair of Justice Committee, Senator Telina Nelson, chairperson of the Medical Malpractice Health Subcommittee, Senator Telotite Agui. And before we begin, I'd like to inform again the public that we have a second hearing scheduled on Bill 112 on Monday, July 12, 2021, at 5:00 PM. That will also take place here, the Congress Building, and via Zoom. Those interested in testifying, please contact my office, (472) 3586, or senatorterlahiguam@gmail.com to receive the Zoom link, or if you need special assistance or accommodations. And again, we will be announcing another hearing date following that in July. All documents submitted relative to Bill 112 will be available -- they were updated as of this morning, but we will continue to update on senatorterlahi.com on our website, prior to issuance of a committee report, which will be submitted to the Guam Legislature and then be available on the Guam Legislature's website. All hearings will be broadcast on GTA TV Channel 21, DOCOMO Channel 117/112.4, and via the Guam Legislature's media on YouTube. Recordings will be available on the Guam Legislature Media YouTube after the hearings as well. Situas Maasi, and welcome. I think I forgot to acknowledge all the rest of my colleagues. Okay, so we have here today with us Senator Joseph Augustine Situas Maasi, Minority Leader Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Jim Moylan, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, and Senator Mary Comacho Torres. Thank you, senators, for being present tonight. Okay, so as we begin, I'm going to introduce the bill since I am the primary sponsor of it. Welcome. I'm glad that you are all here. The bill was meant to correct an injustice, a glaring hole in our law that has been laid plain before us as senators and as a community, one that I believed we would all want to fix. It was not meant to attack anyone or to demonstrate a lack of gratitude for our heroes during the pandemic, and I mean no disrespect to healthcare providers. I ask you to humbly, to work with me on a solution so that we are not a community divided where justice is only for the wealthy. The current law, mandatory malpractice, mandatory arbitration in malpractice cases, that law was passed with an intent to provide a timely, cost-effective, and equitable process for our people and medical professionals to address claims of medical malpractice. Time has revealed that this is not the case currently. The very real and tragic experiences shared by patients and their families who cannot afford the estimated $50,000 mandated arbitration process is evidence of this fact. They have been forced to live with lifelong debilitating conditions, or worse, forced to live without accountability, peace, and justice long after bearing their loved ones. Current law serves the privileged few who can't afford to pay the high costs of mandated arbitration, and medical professionals are fully protected because these high costs serve as a deterrent to patients and families pursuing cases. It has perpetuated a gap between the haves and have-nots, compacting and continuing trauma inflicted by medical negligence. The review of the current law was compelled by the concerns and advocacy of patients and their families and the need to protect good doctors from frivolous lawsuits. So Bill 112 was introduced after numerous informational hearings on the current mandatory malpractice arbitration law in the last term, oversight of medical licensing boards, and careful review of NCSL. This is the National Conference of State Legislatures Analysis of Malpractice Laws and Other Jurisdictions. In drafting the bill, we looked at a way to mitigate the cost of arbitration in order to remove, to remove a huge barrier for working class and indigent patients who currently can't afford the estimated $50,000 needed for arbitration fee, and that's before trial. This bill is intended for these individuals and families with legitimate injury due to negligence who are being denied justice due to costs. Bill 112 simply allows patients to seek justice through the system like everyone else. It puts poor patients on the same level as rich and VIP patients in demanding standard of care and recovering from injury due to negligence, not more and not less. Bill 112 continues the current policy in Guam law of providing a screening process to protect doctors from frivolous lawsuits. The pre-trial screening process can be arbitration, as agreed by the parties. Mediation, if there's no agreement for arbitration or mediation, then the case will be screened by a magistrate judge before it is allowed to go to a trial with a jury. I want to note that a magistrate judge is appointed by the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court of Guam, confirmed by the legislature after a public hearing, employed by the judiciary, governed under judicial codes of conduct, and highly qualified to examine evidence in an impartial manner. They are in the daily practice of examining other types of claims for merit. It is a misconception that we are removing the screen altogether and that claims would go straight to trial, as all other negligence cases in any other industry on Guam must. A magistrate is less expensive screening panel than the three-member arbitration panel screening cases currently at $450 to $850 an hour. Ten jurisdictions with no, have no special statutes for medical malpractice. Thirty jurisdictions have either mandatory alternative dispute resolution, including arbitration, mediation, or settlement conferences, or voluntary alternative dispute resolution. Seventeen of the 30 jurisdictions with alternative dispute resolution, and nine jurisdictions with voluntary mediation or arbitration. And Guam is distinct from these because it has a mandatory arbitration with a very specific guidelines for arbitration, private, it's paid for by the parties, and that is Bill 112 also protects against frivolous claims by ensuring confidentiality of claims made against doctors until they are completely screened, an unlimited confidentiality upon agreement by the parties. The proposed legislation, Bill 112, would only apply to those healing arts professions covered under the current Medical Malpractice Mandatory Arbitration Act. No changes are being proposed as to who is covered. If we could, please put up Slide 1. The proposed legislation applies the exact same standard of care as the current law. What is allowable medicine today is allowable if this bill is passed. Claims can only be brought if there is negligence, if the actions fall below the standard of care. These instances have been extremely rare. The standard of care in a malpractice suit is normally established by expert testimony before the arbitration panel, before any screening panel, before the magistrate. According to this bill, it will be expert testimony before judges and before juries that will determine if the standard of care was applied. So this, this slide shows the current standard of care and the standard of care under Bill 12. It is exactly the same. So it's the prevailing standard of duty, practice, or care by a reasonable physician in the same field practicing medicine in the community at the time of the alleged malpractice shall be the standard applied in the pre-trial screening. Bill 112 also does not change the statute of limitations currently available under the medical malpractice mandatory arbitration law. The current statute of limitations is one year. We have a slide on this. This is contained in a separate law, 7GCA. Thank you. So this allows for one year, and then there are exceptions. One year, when I researched on NCSL, the statute of limitations, one year, means you've got to get up from your injury or the death of a family member, get the money together for your arbitration within one year, and file a claim. And you've got to get to court in one year. That means you've got to finish the arbitration and get into the court system. There are only six jurisdictions that have one-year statute of limits. Thirty-one states have two-year statute of limits. Thirteen states have three-year statute of limits, and there are several who have even longer. Hawaii has two years, by the way, and California has three years. I think this is a huge protection for doctors that currently exist, and it will continue to exist under Bill 112. Under Bill 112, we set a special category for small claims of $20,000 or less to be exempt from pre-trial screening or arbitration, and that can be handled by the Small Claims Division, so that a person wouldn't have to pay arbitration filing fees and arbitrators' fees to seek recourse for small amounts. The current, the current small claims for all other types of cases is $10,000. Bill number 112 is meant to ensure medical malpractice complaints are properly reviewed in arbitration, mediation, or by a magistrate before moving forward through the court system, while also considering a patient's right to due process when they are unable to afford initiating the arbitration process. As the legislative health chair, I have also held oversight hearings to examine the challenges of the Health Professional Licensing Office, which oversees the boards authorized to evaluate allegations of misconduct and take actions against the licensee. But these actions are restricted to public reprimand, imposing a fine, ordering probation, restricting the license or certification, suspending the license or certification, revoking the license or certification, or dismissing the complaint. Licensing boards do not grant monetary relief for damages. Because I understand that retention and recruitment of healthcare professionals is dependent on resources, accountability, and efficiency of services, and that working to improve all these elements can greatly reduce the number of adverse events, I have consistently called for transparency through oversight of the hospital and public health. I have even called for several oversight hearings over our medical boards to get to issues that physicians and patients have raised, especially in the handling of complaints. From those oversight hearings, we found that of all the complaints filed to the Guam Board of Medical Examiners, there were 20, from 2018 to 2020, there were 27, and to the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, there were 14, all resulted in a finding of no violation, according to information at our oversight hearing. At the urging of doctors through the media, we questioned GMH about physician hiring practices and salaries to ensure they were prioritizing resources to critical needs. And I have advocated for more resources for the hospital and public health and salaries that will allow them to attract and retain critical healthcare professionals, and for capital improvements to improve working conditions. There is still much more to be done to raise the standard of healthcare for our people from reform of our licensing boards for accountability, increasing resources to our health professionals, and increasing access and efficiency of services. Bill 112 is not attended, intended, it's not intended to attack our healthcare professionals or bully them. As I've said many times, this has been an ongoing issue that we've been examining since 2018. It's also not the answer to all the challenges that we face, but it is a step I feel is necessary and in the direction of granting access to a chance for restorative justice to patients and families who do not have that currently. We will now accept, I'd like to thank all of my cosponsors on this bill, who have graciously agreed to listen to all the testimony in these hearings and provide input. So we will now accept testimony from those on the panel, first panel. So we have Mr. Walter Duñez. Mister, just for, please state your name when it's your turn to speak, but I think we have Walter Duñez. We'll just go down the row then, if that's okay with you. I, well, yes, so Walter Duñez, if you can be.
Good evening, Senator. My name is Walter Duñez, and I'm here to speak and support the Bill 11236 because of an injustice that was done to my son, Robert Duñez. Now, the history of my son, Robert Duñez, he was born in January 16, 2008. Robert was born with a lot of challenges in life, okay? From the time of his delivery, Robert was born without a butthole, okay? So we immediately had to be medevaced to Tripler Army Medical Center, where the team of doctors over there, surgeons, and so took on Robert's case and immediately performed surgery and gave him a new butthole, okay? Throughout the years that I've been at Tripler Army Medical Center, the first two years, we stayed in the PQ with Robert because of all the complications he had. He had a complication with his digestive system, and when we returned to Guam in 2010, we had immediately had to return to Tripler because of complications with his new butthole. Now, when Robert got to Tripler Army Medical Center, Dr. Edwards and the team of surgeons over there evaluated Robert and informed me that the best thing for Robert right now was to install a stoma, okay? So I didn't know what they were talking about, so I had to educate myself on all these things that these doctors were talking about, what they wanted to do with Robert. Now, throughout my years, this is 2021, Robert has undergone 26 internal surgeries, okay? Twenty-six internal surgeries because of all the challenges he has. Now, Robert, on the first time they installed a stoma, a year after they installed a stoma, Robert had complications with it, with his digestive system, so they went in immediately to find out what was going on, and by doing that, they had to take away Robert's colon because it was so inflamed and it was preventing things from coming out of the stoma hole that it, you know, it was causing him distension. So Robert lost his colon at that time, and what they did was they took the large intestines and used that to be the end of the stoma, okay? Now, when the stoma was blocked again, okay, from the distension and everything, and what that means is that the stoma, the intestines inside below the surface of the stoma was turning and going around the hole, so it prevented anything from coming out. So they had to revise the stoma, okay? After they went in and revised the stoma the second time, everything was fine, so we returned to Guam, and we tried to live a normal life as best as we can. And in 2018, Robert started having distensions again and, you know, bloating and everything. What I mean by distension, if you, Senator Terah, I send them pictures, you know, we need to show these pictures because I could convince you guys why an injustice was done to Robert with these pictures also, not just by me talking, because pictures will tell you a lot of things, believe me. Now, in 2018, when Robert had problems with distensions, they had to revise the stoma. And when we tried to medevac out of Guam, we had problems because Navy Hospital was saying that they had changed the standards of medevac for retirees off island, but that wasn't the case, but we'll talk about that later. Now, we kept Robert on island because he couldn't be medevaced out directly to Tripler Army Medical Center, so they put him at the only PQ on island, which was at GRMC, okay, at that time, in 2018. In 2018, we were looking for a doctor on island that could perform the surgery to revise the new stoma. The only doctor that stepped up to the plate at that time after hearing Robert's case was Dr. Seville Senior, okay? Dr. Seville Senior, a day or two after Robert was admitted, approached me and informed me that he, he looked at Robert's case, and he wanted to do some x-rays and take lab work so he could determine what was going on, and that's exactly what he did. After he did the lab work and all the tests came back, he determined that Robert needed to do surgery right now, so they took, they took the task on doing a revision on his stoma. Now, after they did the revision on the stoma, everything was fine, and the only time they could release him is after he started eating and drinking again and putting something out through their new stoma, which happened maybe a day or two after, okay? So he was on the road to recovery. They released us and we went home, but I also knew, after consulting with the doctors at Tripler and here in Guam, that Robert would still have complications later on down the line, and we know that, so we live with it. We, you know, accept it and try and make him as comfortable as possible until we come up to that point. In 2019, Robert began having distension again, and with the distension, when you see Robert when he gets extended, it's like 89 centimeters, and if you know what 89 centimeters, he looked like he was nine months pregnant, and he's a little child, okay? So that's what it looks like. Now, when we went to the emergency room in Navy Hospital, we, I told the commander what was going on. I had documents with me, I always have documents, I have Robert's medical records, 10 discs on hand at all times. I have numbers where the attending doctor could review what's going on, see the past history of Robert's medical condition, and then be able to call the specialists or individuals that know about Robert and consult with them on what the next task is for Robert. When I went to the emergency room in 2019, they told me they couldn't accept Robert, and they were going to redirect Robert to the PQ at GMH. I said, "Oh, no, no," because I heard things about GMH. I said, "I would rather go to GRMC and go to the PQ there." They said, "Well, GRMC no longer has a PQ." I said, "Oh, okay." So I said, "Let's go." We went to GMH. When we got to GMH, the attending emergency room doctor said, "Yes, we need to admit your son, and then we need to find out what we're going to do." I said, "Okay, may I suggest something to you?" I said, "I have all of Robert's medical records with me, and the last doctor that revised Robert's stoma was Dr. Seville Senior, and I requested to see if he could take on the task again." They informed me that Dr. Seville Senior was no longer on island, he wasn't on island at the time. So I said, "Well, you could talk to his son, Junior, because he was part of the surgical team that went in and did this thing." So they couldn't find anybody, and they were waiting to see who would step up to the plate and do surgery on Robert, or what we're going to do. One doctor stepped up to the plate, I'm not going to mention his name, but he stepped up to the plate, he came into the room and said, "Mr. Duñez, I checked your son's records out there, and, I mean, I've seen what the case is. I will take on your son's case and go ahead and perform surgery." I said, "Sir, have you ever done something like this, or do you know anything about this?" He says, "Oh, he'll be all right." I said, "Sir, I got documents here, I got phone numbers here, and I requested you call these doctors and find out what, you know, what you can do or how to do it, or what's the next case we could do." He said, "Oh," he was so arrogant, okay? Some doctors are like this, okay? Believe me or not. I've been through so many years of medical services with my son, but this is the first year, 2019, I met a doctor, he was so arrogant, he goes, I even told him, "Dr. Seville did the surgery and to consult with him, his colleague." This doctor told me, "Oh, he don't need that, you know, he don't need all that, I'll take care of your son," like he was my parent on that same table. So I said, "Okay, no problem." So we went into pre-op, when we got into pre-op, all of a sudden, I looked through the glass there, in the next room, and the doctor was arguing with the anesthesiologist, because the anesthesiologist was telling him something about what they needed to do with Robert, but they were arguing, and as nurses, that, I mean, what are you arguing about? He said, "Oh, no, that doctor's always been like that with the, with the staff, you know, he's always like that." So I said, "Okay, we'll just leave it like that and see what happens." My son went into surgery, and when he went into surgery, a couple hours later, he came out, and he was in the recovery room, because he had to, you know, wake up and everything before they sent him upstairs. So I went in there with him, the doctor wasn't there. The doctor didn't talk to me or anything, but, you know, in my experience with these surgeries, a doctor is supposed to do certain things, his duties and responsibility to the patient and their family, okay? Number one, when they go into surgery, they're supposed to talk to you about the plan of what they're going to do. Then after the surgery, they come out and tell you, "Okay, this is what happened." Then after the surgery, they come out and tell you, "Okay, this is what happened, now this is the next course of, this is the next plan we're going to do," okay? And usually, there's a team that he consults with, and that team consists of the doctor, the nurses, and the parent. The parent's always part of that team, okay? And through my years of experience, and this doctor never consulted with me, three days after my son came out of the emergency room, I was being requested to speak to this doctor, and I informed the head nurse that I needed to speak to him about what he's done, and that what he has done doesn't look normal to me, because I've seen my son get three stoma revisions done, and what this doctor did did not look like anything that those other doctors done, okay? Now, when I looked at my son, I looked at him and said, "Man, you know, I may have made the wrong decision about this doctor going in and doing something to you, because if you see the pictures that I gave this to Senator Lahey's office, this doctor cut my son from the bottom of his sternum to the top of his belly button and cut this long just to go and revise the stoma, which is, I've never heard of, never seen any doctor do that. Dr. Sebel went in and he did a cut this much to do the revision of the stoma. The doctors in Tripler Army Medical Center did the same thing. This doctor did what a student would do in high school in science lab to check the anatomy of a frog, when your teacher says, 'Here, cut the frog open and look at the anatomy and tell me what you see.'" That's what it looked like, okay? Now, I requested to see this doctor, this guy had questions about what he had done, but, and then, questions about what is our plan of care for recovery? What is our plan of care for pain management? What is our plan of care for certain things that you're supposed to do as a doctor and the medical team after surgery, which this doctor failed to do, okay? So he failed to do his duties and responsibilities, so, you know, I'm saying, "Okay, well..." You know, when you go into these surgery rooms, these medical rooms and stuff like hospitals, you got signs all over the place that says, "No pictures allowed." Well, you know what? I was so discreet, I took pictures so I have proof of exactly what has happened to my son, okay? You know, when my son, when I took, when I went, took pictures and took it to Navy Hospital, I informed the doctors there, the pediatric ward, the commanders who's his primary care physicians. I pleaded with them, Dr. Puthawala and Dr. Anderson, to help me get my son out of GMH because he's going to end up dying in that hospital. Now, I showed them pictures of what they had done to my son, and I showed them pictures that before he went in, weighing 50 some pounds, or 45 to 50 pounds, and when he came out of there, weighing at 25 pounds, okay? You know, the pediatric surgeon, the pediatric doctor up there was telling me they were getting ready to release Robert and send him home. I said, "No, you ain't." I said, "You are not going to send me home with a child that looked like this, skin and bones into the public, and if somebody in the public sees my son, they're going to say, 'I neglected to do my duty as a parent because it looks like I'm mistreating my son or abusing my son by not feeding him.'" Okay, so I pleaded with the commanders over there at Navy Hospital to help me get Robert out of there, and we did. And the only way I could get him out of there is first I had to go to, to their office downstairs and said they were going to pull him out, and you know what they had the audacity to do after all this? They slapped me with $108,000 bill. I laughed at them and I said, "Oh, really? You're really going to charge me for this, and you didn't do nothing?" You know, these doctors, when they take an oath after graduation, it's a Hippocratic oath, okay? There's a Hippocratic oath, you know, they swear not to bring no more harm to the patients, and they swear to give the best medical care they can to the patients, okay? Well, I think this doctor violated his oath, okay? And when the doctors received Robert at Navy Hospital, you know, the doctors usually don't talk bad or negative about their colleagues. These doctors at Navy Hospital, the five doctors that received him up there, looked at each other and looked at me and says, "What did these guy do?" Upon doing lab works and x-rays, Robert still had infections from that surgery. So in order for us to be medevaced out of Guam to Hawaii, they had to sustain Robert, they had to stabilize him, and then move forward. So they went into surgery. They went into surgery and they fixed, they got rid of the infection, and then they started preparing Robert to leave. Now, this is just a matter of days, okay? You know, when that doctor did that surgery, he said that Robert will be fine, okay? So before we left, it took a week before that doctor came up to see Robert in GMH, and the reason why it took a week is because I went to the social worker, I made a father complain that I have not seen or heard from this doctor who did surgery to my son, and he has not consulted with me on what the recovery plan is for my son. Now, when that doctor came in that day after the social worker got a hold of him, he had the audacity to look me in, to come in a room and first thing coming out of his mouth was, "Who lied about who tried to get a hold of me?" I said, "I did." Point the finger at me because I'm the horse, and I'm the horse that's speaking right now. It's coming out of the horse's mouth. I said, "Doc, don't, don't be, don't lie, don't tell me anything else, because I followed the rules." I called the operator, operator's supposed to automatically call you, and you're going to answer and talk to me. You never did. I did that for three days. Then the head nurse did it as well. Then I consulted with the pediatric doctor, and they said they did it, and nothing happened, so I had to call the social worker and find out, and you finally showed up. But that's not the point, the point is, I have questions about what you have done to my son in surgery, because you never consulted me after surgery, never told me anything, but I have seen my son revision of the stoma three times, and yours don't look nothing like what they did. Don't look nothing like, when he revised the stoma hole, okay, the stoma hole is only so large, okay, they make a skin barrier that'll fit that about as big as this right here. Now, he made a hole bigger than the bottom of a regular water bottle. That hole was so big that the skin barrier that they make for it, it went above and beyond us, so we had to, we had to do something else. Okay, so what happened was, when the doctors received him in Okinawa, they found out that Robert had prolapsed. So when he prolapsed, all of his large intestines, because that hole was so big, came out of his guts, okay, and it was outside of his body. And the only thing they could do to protect that from getting infected was use a trash bag, because they didn't have no skin barrier or colostomy bag big enough to hold all his guts that was out of his body, okay? In order for us to fly, medevac to Hawaii, that emergency room doctor told me, "Mr. Duenas, I read the records here, and they said you're very knowledgeable in your son." So they said, "If you have any questions, consult with you." I said, "Okay, what's the problem?" He goes, "The flight surgeon is going to be coming down to see your son to clear him for a flight to Hawaii, but if he sees what he see, what I see here, he's not going to be able to do that with your son." Now, my son's guts was all out of his body, so the doctor says, "Do you know what to do?" I said, "Yes, I have to shove that thing back in his body." As a parent, I looked at my son, I said, "Sorry, son, I have to do this, and this is going to hurt, but I will have to do this." So I aggressively took his large intestines while the emergency room doctor went outside and held the flight surgeon outside until I was complete. I took my son's intestines in my hand, large intestines in my hand, and I applied sugar to it, because sugar helps shrink it and take away the liquid. I shoved that thing in his body, then I took a gauze pad, and I wrapped it around his belly to keep that thing in there, so when the doctor comes in, he don't see what I have seen, or what other doctors have seen prior to that. So that flight doctor came in, the flight surgeon came in, he sort of got the gauze pad around him, no problem, and declared my son for flight. So the next day, we fly out to Tripler Army Medical Center. We got there, met by the surgeons from Capitol Army Children's Hospital, from the Tripler Army Medical Center itself, and they informed me, "Dr., Mr. Duenas, before we go into surgery, we have to go in and evaluate the damages that's been done, and then come up with a plan of what we're going to do." So the first day, they went in, all they do is evaluation. He came out, they said, "Okay, this is what we're going to do, Mr. Duenas." My son's intestine was outside of his body for so long that it was no longer available to save and put back in for it to function. So my son lost all of his large intestines because of that, because of that procedure, okay? Now they had to put an ileostomy in.
Mr. Duenas, I am very sorry to interrupt you, I really am. However, I guess I need to ask if you can wrap up your testimony so that we can allow the others to testify.
I got you, Senator, and I'm here to support this law because this law that they're proposing, and it needs to be put into law because an injustice was done to my son and to other people in the community and their families. And these doctors that do this need to be held accountable for their actions, and the only way that we could afford to go and do this is through this bill that's being passed, because if we go through arbitration hearing, I can't afford tens and thousands of dollars to go to a hearing and have them hear this and then go to a trial, you know? We need this bill to go in so we could do this. But, you know, don't get me wrong, there's not all these doctors, okay, that are bad doctors or do things wrong. You know, decision-making process as doctors is very hard. They got to come up with a solution of what they're going to do and how to do it. I've experienced a lot of things with good doctors throughout the years with my son, 13 years of it, put it, matter of fact, this is the first time that somebody has something, done something to my son that I think he needs to pay because of the harm he did instead of helping my son, he harmed him more and caused more damages than is needed. That's why I support this law, and those of you that have ever experienced anything like this, you need to step up to the plate, present their case, and let them know why we need to support this bill and why this bill needs to be put into law.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Duenas, we did receive the pictures that you sent, and I guess they're pretty graphic, I'm going to decline.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yes, yes, ma'am, they're graphic. That's why I took it, that's why they say, "No picture taken." I took those pictures so I could make my point and prove that an injustice was done to my son. What parent's going to stand in an emergency room and hold the guts of his son, large intestine in his hand, and the doctor saying that that's okay, it's going to be all right? Oh, no, I don't think so.
I am putting them on the drive, which all testimony is provided on the drive for all the senators to see. They will also be put on my website for anyone who wants to look at those, they are available, Mr. Duenas. Sisus Massey.
And I'm hoping that will help you guys in making your decision. Believe me, it needs to be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Ken Leon Guerrero.
My name is Ken Leon Guerrero, I'm a resident of Santa Rita here, and I'm also a patient. Now, as I was preparing for my testimony here, I was reflecting on a conversation I had with a friend of mine who was a doctor for over 20 years on this island, and in that conversation a while back, we were talking about this issue, and he told me that if a doctor is competent and meticulous, he need not fear malpractice. And with his 20 years of experience here on the island, that was proof. Most of Guam's practitioners, medical practitioners on Guam are very good at what they do. I know that from personal experience. I have a number, have had a number of chronic health issues that went misdiagnosed for more than 30 years. I'd seen the best and the brightest medical practitioners in Hawaii, California, Nevada, and Georgia, but the conditions were misdiagnosed and mistreated until I arrived here on Guam in '07. And here on the island, the local physicians were able to diagnose and correctly treat chronic conditions that went undiagnosed in much larger communities. And that is why I'm testifying here today, because as we know, there are good mechanics and bad mechanics, we also know there are good doctors and bad doctors. That point was driven home to me personally in 2014. My doctor had me scheduled for an elective surgery, and when I went to the pre-op meeting before the surgery, I was informed by the office manager that since I lost my insurance, I was going to have to pay for the entire procedure and post-op care upfront. When I went to the doctor to talk about the possibility of making payments on this rather large medical expenditure, he told me very flatly, "This is a business, not a charity." And we have to look at this bill in that context, because the medical business is a business. It's a business that has an unfair advantage over every other business on the island, because in any other business on the island, if there is an, if there is a situation, the patient or the customer has legal recourse. Healthcare is the one area where legal recourse does not exist. So in 2020, when I had coverage again, I went to my new doctor and outlined the procedure that I wanted done, told him why I wanted it done, and gave him a copy of my medical record. And he told me that he disagreed with that procedure, telling me that if he went through with performing that procedure, I would need to wear a diaper the rest of my life. The fact that I am sitting here not wearing a diaper tells me that I made the right decision, but had I gone ahead and had that procedure the first time around and ended up wearing a diaper for the rest of my life, I didn't have the tens of thousands of dollars that it would have taken to file a claim. I would have had no recourse whatsoever, even though my quality of life took a, would have taken a dramatic turn for the worse, and my medical expenses would have escalated dramatically. Just like every one of you on this panel, you have heard similar stories from a number of people, I have, I hear similar stories from friends and family who unfortunately have had a severe reduction in their quality of life, dramatic escalations in their medical care due to mistakes, accidents, or negligence. Doctors are human, sometimes they make mistakes, but when a doctor makes a mistake, it's not the doctor who suffers the loss of quality of life, it's not the doctor that suffers the dramatic increase in the cost of medical care after the event, it is the patient. I've read Bill 112, I see it accomplishes a major policy goal that could be a good benefit for a small part of our community, and those are the people seeking recourse from legitimate and justifiable complaints made by mistake or accident or neglect that dramatically impact their quality of life. If I go to a mechanic and he makes some decisions or takes some actions that destroy the engine of my car, I have recourse. But if I go to a doctor who gives me a bad recommendation or makes a mistake that costs me my quality of life or my life, there is no recourse. That is a protection that no other business on this island has, and this is something that needs to be addressed to make it a level playing field. It's not to punish doctors, it's to recognize that there are good doctors, there are bad doctors, just as there are good people in every profession and bad people in every profession. And justifiable complaints with easy access to a recourse system is the one thing that does not exist in this business that exists in every other business. I like that the law, proposed law does not eliminate arbitration, but eliminates the mandatory, eliminates it as a mandatory first step. Those of you on this panel know that I am no stranger to the arbitration process, having fought for years against the Guam-White TK situation, where three arbitrators made a decision that a company that did not pay any rent, did not build the projects it proposed to build, was to be given $24 million of economic loss it did not make because it didn't do the project it promised to do. So my view of the arbitration process is biased, because in every other instance that I've seen where government in Guam went into the arbitration process, it was the taxpayers who suffered. In this situation right here, we have a group of people who, having suffered a severe loss either in quality of life or in relations, are now being asked to front tens of thousands of dollars just to get their case heard. That is not an equitable situation. When we look at the fact... When we look at the fact that the medical business is a business, the business is designed to make a profit. But in order for the business to be balanced, it has to be balanced for everybody. I believe this bill is good for the doctors, it is good for the patients. When I say it's good for the doctors, it protects them from the frivolous lawsuits that everybody is saying are going to come. Unlike, I have probably a lot more experience before the judicial system through my years as a community advocate and also in my years in the insurance industry. And I have faith in the Guam judges. I have faith that the judges here in our judicial system will be able to fairly screen out the malicious lawsuits, the frivolous lawsuits, and thereby protect the reputation of the good doctors. But I think that having those same judges, listening to the elements of the complaint, will be able to determine whether or not this is a situation that should go forward to further vetting through the trial process. And I think that if that process moves forward, there's going to be a lot, there's going to be a learning curve. Every time we make a major change in policy here, there is always a learning curve. But I think at the end of the day, the learning curve will be a positive one because we're not talking about tens of thousands of cases going through this process. We're talking about a very small number of cases going through the process. And while the number is small, the impact on the people affected is huge. Just in my circle of friends and families, I can point to a few cases that I think would have merited, would have had a justifiable reason to proceed to trial. But those people were blocked by the mandatory arbitration process. There's been a lot of talk about how passing this bill is going to create an exodus of healthcare providers from this island. I think that if there's going to be an exodus of healthcare providers from this island, it's going to be because we have a deterioration in our local economy that is throwing more and more people out of work, forcing more companies to close down their benefit packages as they cut costs in order to stay alive, shrinking the pool of people able to pay for medical care. There have been some complaints that this bill is going to drive the cost of healthcare This bill isn't going to cost doctors a single penny because malpractice insurance like office rent, supplies, salaries, and utilities are pass-through costs and will be paid for by the patients and the insurance companies. So if you ask the people, would you be willing to pay a little bit more for your healthcare knowing that you are protected, I think you would get a resounding yes from everybody, knowing that they have that legal recourse in the event of malpractice. Now, malpractice is not an everyday occurrence. Malpractice is something that happens either through mistake or neglect. But most of Guam's medical practitioners are competent and methodical. I know that because I have been through a gauntlet. In fact, a number of the doctors out here today are physicians that I regularly see. And I am highly satisfied with the competence they have shown me and the methodical approach they have taken to my healthcare. And I think that is the rule, not the exception. What this Bill 112 does is it addresses the exceptions, not the rule. And I think that when we look at how many patients are seen by these practitioners and compare that to how few bad outcomes we see, I think that this bill is good for the patients. It protects patients in a worst-case scenario from the few bad doctors we have, but it also protects the good doctors, and we have a lot of them. So I encourage you to support and pass this bill so that we can bring equity to a situation in the event that real and justifiable actions take place that the magistrates were able to cut through the red tape and expedite to trial in the event that both parties don't want to go to arbitration or mediation. So I encourage you to pass 112 to protect both the patients and the good doctors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leon Guerrero. I have had a request from some of my colleagues that they want to see some of the pictures. There are about, there are more than thirteen pictures. I'm going to put two slides up for Mr. Duennas. If my staff could just put those up briefly, then we'll go to the next speaker. Next. Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Duennas, thank you again. Okay, the next person signed up to testify is Dr. Mariana Kukwen, Dr. Mariana Kukwen. And testimony will be provided by Dr. Carla Haddock and the most beautiful baby in the room.
Hafiday Speaker and members of the Thirty-Sixth Guam Legislature, my name is Carla Haddock and I was asked today by Dr. Mariana Kukwen to read her testimony. She was initially signed up to speak, however, she just also had her baby yesterday, so congratulations, Dr. Mariana, on your successful delivery. And I have baby Jose with me because he needs me. So her letter reads as follows. All of the following testimony is of her words. Hafiday Speaker Talahi and members of the Thirty-Sixth Guam Legislature, I am speaking in opposition of Bill 112-36 as it is not the answer to the limitations of Guam's healthcare system. I want to be clear from the start. My concerns with this bill's passing is not because I'm worried about being sued, but I am worried that as a result of this bill, I will not have the resources or specialists I will need as a physician to offer safe and appropriate care for my patients. My name is Mariana Leon Guerrero Kukwen, and I am the daughter of a Guam-born at Guam Memorial Hospital and class of 2001 Valley Victorian of St. John's School. I completed medical school at Mayo Clinic in Rochester, Minnesota, and residency at United Hospital in St. Paul, Minnesota. I am a family medicine physician working at Mariana's Physician Group specializing in women's health and high-risk obstetrics. I relocated to Guam in 2016 immediately after completing my medical training, as my principal goal was always to come back to the community that raised me and helped improve the island's healthcare system. While a handful of local graduates pursuing medicine plan to return to the island, very few do. I am honored to have some colleagues from my generation who have returned to the island with a similar goal as mine to serve our community and advance Guam's healthcare system, which is medically underserved and significantly lagging behind U.S. standards. The proposal of Bill 112-36 has created a great amount of tension between healthcare providers and our legislators in a time where we should be working together to improve our healthcare system. Our senators have called physicians "bullied," "threatening," and "selfish," which is both inaccurate and offensive. We have dedicated years of education, training, and financial loss to serve patients. We often miss out on our own family events, holidays, birthdays, to serve our patients. Out of residency, I had the opportunity to work in a state-of-the-art medical system with easy access to specialists and subspecialists. I had numerous offers to practice less hours for almost double the salary I was promised here on Guam, but I chose to return home. If the senators have taken the time to really listen to the providers, as stated in the multiple different letters, they would know that the providers are most fearful about how this bill would negatively impact Guam's fragile healthcare system and all of Guam's patients, not just the most vulnerable or poor populations. In my opinion, the legislators are missing the big picture and the real problem. There are so many other obstacles and injustices in our local healthcare system that I believe the senators need to focus their efforts on rather than creating reactive legislation and getting completely rid of the mandatory arbitration. We need to focus on being proactive versus reactive. We need more emphasis on prevention and trusting healthcare providers so patients take care of their chronic conditions, patients are held accountable for participating in their own healthcare, and patients are not coming in when they are too sick to be saved. I understand there are bad, tragic, unfortunate outcomes that happen in medicine, but I also know that bad outcomes do not always mean malpractice or medical negligence. Even the best medicine in the best facilities can fail to save lives. Providers need to be able to safely talk to our patients when bad outcomes happen so they can understand what happened, ask questions, and get closure if possible. When the door is open to an easy, affordable way for our patients to take providers to trial, providers become hesitant to speak with their patients. There needs to be a better system and resources dedicated to allow doctors to have a safe and private way to do peer review when complaints arise before going through the court system, where judges and even expert witnesses have no idea how the practice of medicine is on Guam. Our physicians struggle daily with low resources, outdated equipment and facilities, and lack of access to specialists. Local providers often have to work outside of their scope of expertise for the sake of the patient because we are lacking so many specialists on the island. We take that risk because it is what our patients need, and they cannot afford to go off-island for that specialty care. There are visiting specialists like Dr. Greg Carrata, maternal-fetal medicine, who has already written a statement that he will no longer see patients on Guam if Bill 112-36 passes. As a provider who manages high-risk OB, including fifty percent of the underinsured and limited insurance patients on the island, this is very concerning. This population will not be able to seek care off-island if they have a high-risk condition requiring maternal fetal medicine consult. These mothers and/or babies will be harmed, and not even the legal system will be able to give them recourse. In fact, in cases like this, Bill 112-36 could be creating bad outcomes by worsening our most vulnerable patient's access to care. In primary care and pediatrics, providers often network with colleagues off-island for assistance on management and treatment in specialties not available locally, such as rheumatology, cardiothoracic surgery, gastroenterology, and pediatric specialties other than neurology. The passing of this bill could even impact off-island specialists from doing telemedicine as their local malpractice insurance may not cover them on Guam, and why would we take that risk? If the legislators want to make a big difference, they should focus on how to get more access to healthcare insurance for all, work with local insurance companies to decrease the cost of healthcare, and put more resources into recruiting physicians, especially specialists. Even the best, most educated, most compassionate, and thorough providers can have bad outcomes. And a single complaint that can go to trial can ruin their reputation, their careers, and their lives. Every complaint filed against a provider has to be submitted to a national databank and be explained for the rest of the provider's career. This includes complaints proven to be standard of care or good medicine. The vast majority of providers think about patients first, but when they feel threatened for their own safety, like any other human being, they are going to make the choice to protect themselves. Our island legislatures and the people of Guam have to protect and advocate for our providers because we have far too few providers already willing to practice on this island and even a smaller group of physicians with roots to this island. If providers choose not to practice here or limit their services, who will take care of the island's people? The island will be left with few doctors, even more limited access to specialists, and the burden will be left on the already struggling public health and GMH. The people of Guam will have the worst healthcare. We will see that only the rich can access off-island care, and they will be saved, and those more unfortunate will be left here to suffer. I personally do not believe, I personally do believe that there needs to be an improvement to our current system to allow those who feel they've been mistreated by healthcare professionals to gain recourse. But Bill 112-36 is not that solution. Doctors, lawyers, legislators need to come together to find a better alternative. Whether it's simply decreasing the cost of arbitration or coming up with more resources to improve our healthcare system, the conversation needs to continue. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. I hope the senators can understand why Bill 112 is not a good solution for our unique island after listening to those who understand and choose to live in our island's healthcare system daily. Sinceramente, Mariana Leon Guerrero Kukwen, family medicine obstetrics, and Jose. Thank you.
Sisus Mossi. Next, we have Selena Taga.
Hi, my name is Selena Taga. I just only called this morning about this bill. So I wanted to be in here today. What it is, is that two months ago, I seeked a lawyer and about asking an advice on what happened to me. So he said, I told him everything. And I said, does a doctor have the right to flip my fingers after, three days after operation? He said, no, without my consent. So that was two months ago. Then the lawyer turned around and said to me that it's going to be costly, it's going to be costly fifty thousand just to go against a doctor. So when I saw this bill, like maybe last week, two weeks ago, I suggested that I should come in and voice my opinion. November seventeenth, I got operated from a hand doctor. The third day, third or fourth day, he flipped my fingers. They didn't tell me anything. Just grabbed my fingers. Three days after my operation, there's a scar. I have a fracture wrist in here, just screws inside my hand. Third, fourth day, the doctor flipped my fingers backwards, my whole hand backwards. So records, I asked for records, and all I see is pain, a smile. All I see is the same documents. Patient has no complaint. I've been asking for painkillers. I've been paying for, since November, every second I'm in pain. Every second, even up to now. So when that doctor, I don't know if I should mention her name, but anyways, after the third day, I came in there. It's okay, I'm standing up. Standing up, it's okay, after the operation. I need you to sit down.
Just a second. Please get the microphone. Oh, okay, go ahead.
Sit down, right? Sit down. So I'm going like this, then the nurses stand there, the doctors stand there. I didn't know what they're going to do, they just flipped everything backwards on me. They just flipped everything backwards on me. I screamed in pain. The whole clinic heard me screaming. I'm already falling off my chair. The doctor has to tell the nurse to run over to me and hold the chair because I'm already falling down. So when he got up, when he got up, I got up. He turned around to the nurse, "Okay, therapy on her. That's it, walk away from me." He didn't explain to me why he had to flip me, flip my whole fingers backwards after the operation. He didn't explain to me or what. So I went to the therapist, GMH therapist. I've been going there to the therapist and everything, and he even said he has never seen a patient like me out of 20 years his career as a therapist. He has never seen Isaiah because he flipped my whole fingers, my whole hands. So I can't turn my hand. I can't turn my hand. This is how far I can go. I can't close my fingers fully. So that's what's going on with me. And to me, is that why he didn't ask a consent from me? Why he just did that to me? So I have a doctor's appointment again on the 23rd. They're trying to schedule a therapist again. It's not helping me, it's not working. My regular doctor, I have to go to my regular doctor for painkillers to give me, because that doctor trunks as a controlled substance. I say, what, I'm in pain every second, every minute, even up to now? I can't even sleep at night or all those things. So I asked for documents. I went for adult disability. My work is waiting for me. I work in Naval Base. My work is waiting for me to heal, willing to wait for me until I get healed. So there's documents, the same documents on appointments saying that mild pain, no complaint from patient. What is that? Since November, already gone eight months, I'm going through like this, every second My opinion is that why? Why you didn't ask me, ask a consent? So I'm a left-handed person to let me know, and if I agree or what, I'll sign, but no consent or nothing to just flip everything on me. I think that's all I got to say. So I qualify for adult disability, social security. I've got the documents from the therapist, from the hand doctor, my regular doctor. So I qualify, but I qualify for social security because I'm going for adult disability because of what he did. So yeah, I think that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Ms. Taga.
I don't want no one going through what I'm going through for that doctor to flip anybody's fingers after three days after operation. I don't want that going through somebody that in the same situation like me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taga. Are you in support of the bill or against the bill?
I'm in support of the bill. That's why I came in when I found out about this. I'm in support of this bill.
Thank you very much.
To help others, for others not to go through like what I'm going through.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
If you can remain for questions, we will ask some questions after the next speaker, okay?
Excuse me?
If you can remain a few more minutes for questions.
Okay. I'm trying to think what else I'm missing. What else I think I have.
All right. Well, now I'll hear from Dr. McNinch.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and Senators. My name is Rahm McNinch. I am Chair of Public Administration and Legal Studies at the University of Guam. One of the four programs that I administer is the Health Services Administration Program, and I mainly work in that particular field in health evaluation in terms of policy evaluation. I support Bill 112, and I do have just a general offer or suggestion. If I can help the legislature, or my students can help the legislature in any way on any data support or other information you'd need to make a better policy in any of these areas, please contact me, and I mean that very genuinely and sincerely. That's why we have a university, is to support these kinds of efforts. Basically, my comments are very brief. I'm going to try to take less than five minutes. I looked at three points. I looked at the 1975 law, I looked at the 1991 law, and then I looked at Bill 112. And so I formulated three basic questions. The three basic questions was, is basically, does the 1991 law function as intended, as the legislative intent stated? The second question is, if it doesn't, why? Why doesn't it work? And then the third question would be, does Bill 112 improve what the 1991 law basically tries to do? So basically, in the evaluation that I did of the 1991 law, it does not appear that the 1991 law is very functional. That is, it doesn't work. In a way, I jokingly characterize it as a doorbell to nowhere. That is, a person can try to get some answers, but they won't be able to given the particular process that's been set up in that particular law in that particular way. The empirical evidence to show this is from the National Practitioner Database, and there's good national data to show how many lawsuits are filed per state, per jurisdiction, per 100,000 people. And so there's three basic points of data I can share with you. All else equal, about 21.5 malpractice cases are filed per 100,000 residents across the United States on average. The high state is Louisiana with 44, the low state is Hawaii with about five. And so all else equal, if we use the lowest case possible, we could look at the Hawaii case, and the Hawaii case, if Guam was comparable, would mean about seven to eight malpractice suits would be filed a year here. So then the question becomes, how many cases were filed using this arbitration process? Was it seven? Yes or no? And we can track that over time and look at it very empirically without emotion and say, does this process work or not? And I believe, in my opinion, because I know all of you individually, and the public doesn't know this, I know all of you individually, all senators want a better process, a better way to serve the community. And so the question does, asks, should ask, does this current process, the 1991 law, serve the public or not? And then it leads into the question, if it doesn't, does Bill 112 improve on it? Well, if we use the statistics nationally, Hawaii, if we had the Hawaii average, we'd have 78, seven to eight cases per year. If we use the median number, we'd have 33 malpractice cases per year. And then if we use the high number of Louisiana, we'd have 66 cases per year. And we can easily compare Guam's case to those cases. Here's the problem, I think, with the 1991 law. Unlike the 1975 law, the 1975 law has very good procedures in it. The 1991 law has hardly any procedures or any structure, and I think that that's the critical failure, and that's why this law has failed, and that's why this law should be improved upon. And so basically, the question is, does Bill 112 address the issues in the, or the flaws in the 1991 law? I believe it's a great start. I think it answers a lot of the questions. It provides procedures, ideas, pathways. As a general policy suggestion, though, Senators, and my time is wrapping up here, I have a very sincere suggestion. I believe that a policy charrette should be used to address this issue. That's where you'd bring in all of the right stakeholders, who have all the right information to craft the best policy possible, and I believe that, Madam Speaker, extended that opportunity in public yesterday to ask for that kind of good, positive input to make better policy. And I think that, in general, if I can help in my role at the university, I'm certainly willing and able to do so, and I'm at your pleasure in that regard. And I thank you very much for this opportunity to say a few words today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. McNinch. Dr. Joel Joseph.
Buenos, and half a day. Thank you, Senators, for entertaining us and allowing me to address you regarding Bill 112. My name is Dr. Sir Joel Joseph, TVM. I own Wise Owl Animal Hospital. Wise Owl services up to 80% of Guam's pets. Fully staffed, we have 50-plus employees, and Wise Owl has been the only veterinary clinic on Guam consistently offering any emergency services. Veterinarians and veterinary nurses suffer with money problems, low pay, long hours, a requirement to play many different roles, room tech, surgical tech, lab tech, ICU tech, janitor, internist, orthopod, anesthesiologist, cardiologist, and surgeon, and more. All the while, we have to have a sympathetic ear for our pet-owning clients and their families. We see our patients suffering because owners don't understand necessary treatments, because owners don't apply necessary treatments, or they don't have the means to pay for treatments. We don't get into veterinary medicine for the money, and our clients frequently don't have any health insurance whatsoever. They can't pay for blood work, ultrasounds, radiographs, or other treatments. They expect us to do it for free, and they try to make us guilty for charging for services. Yet the resulting measures we take for our patients must not excessively hinder or delay the compassionate medical care that our society demands for its animals. Your bill, specifically by changing the small claims limit to $20,000, will allow pet owners to turn us into punching bags with their temper tantrums and their rudeness, which has been exacerbated by the COVID epidemic. It does nothing to improve medical care or the access to it. Due to the introduction and possible passage of Bill 112, Wise Owl has already completely closed all our emergency services because these are the ones that historically end up in litigation. Because Bill 112 is retroactive with no statutory time limit, and I felt really bad that you put up a different law indicating what statutory time limit was, because in Bill 112, it says there's no time limit. That wasn't kosher. We closed our emergency services because Bill 112 opens us to every petty grievance, whether legitimate or not. Making it easier to sue doctors does not improve medical care. It does not improve access to medical care. It limits it. I would like to remind you about the law you are now bullying Guam to get repealed. In the MMMAA, you have a law that has withstood constitutional challenges. You have a law that has survived organic challenges and the test of time. Literally, this has gone on over decades. The reason it has withstood the test of time is because it is a good law. It's not a perfect law. You're not going to hear that from anybody here today, but it is a law that can be modified and modified intelligently to meet needs that were not originally foreseen. I want you to think about the results of opening the floodgates of litigation without the checks and balances of the MMMAA. Doctors and staff will spend their time with legal counsels and in court instead of caring for patients. Fees will need to go up in order to cover legal bills and the missed time in exam rooms. The doctor fees goes up, the insurance rates go up. The only ones that will lose out are the poor, the indigent, which are the ones you are professing to do this for. The only true result will be that medical care will only be affordable by the rich who can go off-island. Look around you, Senators, in that big crowd out there. Have you seen the medical community come together ever like this? I mean, for anything. Doctors do not agree on anything, okay? Doctors can't even agree that your mucous membranes are pink, okay? And I'm going to call you two senators out, Senator Tlahey and Titegui. You have united almost the entirety of Guam's medical professional community. I think that is an amazing feat, and I congratulate you for it. You have now created the basis of an organization that can go forward and target each and every senator that votes for this law at the next election, and we will spend all that money that you accuse us of accumulating on defeating your reelection bids. You have gotten us organized, and we thank you. Doctor after doctor has or will be telling you that they will reduce services and consider leaving the island. These are not threats. This is not bullying. This is the truth of what will happen if you pass Bill 112. There are doctors on record who have already said they will not come to Guam if you pass Bill 112. This is not a threat or bullying. This is the truth of what will happen if you pass Bill 112, and it is already happening. Senators, if you want to improve the healthcare on Guam, my answer is, do your job, okay? Many of you do it very well, but do your job. I thank you for mentioning in your preamble about how you have oversight over the boards. Guam boards are confirmed by you, our senators. Guam boards are where the discussions of the standards of medical care should happen, especially those discussions regarding the community standards of care that you have been espousing. So let's see what you have done in regards to the Guam Board of Allied Health. Approximately 50% of that board is ineligible to be on that board, and you confirm them. Their term limits were up in 2011. Let me repeat that. 2011, their term limits were up. That is, 10 years ago that your senatorial predecessors declared openly that the Guam Board of Allied Health was out of control and term limits were needed. You are guilty of violating this law. Did you know that to get a veterinarian license on Guam takes eight months or more due to the members that are illegally on this board? The board chair has remained at that post for approximately 20 years. Term limits are nine. The same chairperson has a license as a clinical psychologist. Not just a psychologist, but a specialized form of psychologist, a clinical psychologist. Clinical psychology requires extra training after medical school, and psychologists have to go to medical school. But the board chairman has never attended medical school. Her claim to her license is harmful to Guam. It's fraudulent. But she is a friend to many of you, and you allow this friend with a PhD in education, so she is a doctor, to practice and lead Guam's medical community and call herself a doctor of medicine. The allied board is supposed to have a veterinarian among its members, or it is not legitimate. It does not have one, and since your friend, Dr. Harper, left, it has not had one in that position. The allied board frequently does not have enough members to beat a quorum because they don't have all their spots filled. So they just decided a quorum means something else for them. The Guam Board of Allied Health is the only board in the United States that is not connected to the National Veterinary Licensing Board. It is the only one. You should be ashamed of yourselves for your oversight or lack of it. You are supposed to be vetting these people that are on these boards. You want to improve medical care. This is your political arena. This is where you guys start. You are supposed to be obeying the law. Please, please, do your job. What I would actually like to see is a senatorial malpractice. What I would actually like to see is a senatorial malpractice suit filed against one of you, or better yet, since you ignored that law, that you spend the next several years in litigation without the chance for arbitration. You broke the law. You committed malpractice. You should be the first, the first thing anyone should see when they pull up your name on the internet for the rest of your life is that you have violated this law or the ethics of your office, and it should stay there for the rest of your life. Your fellow senators, who rely on you to tell them the truth, should convict you for ethical violations, specifically getting their support under false pretenses. You never had the medical community behind you, and the proof of it is outside and upstairs, okay? And you openly stated to your colleagues that you had the support of the medical community. I can only hope that your senatorial ethics committee stands up and does its job. Shame on you for what you've done. You have declared that no other professionals get the protection that is afforded in the MMMAA. You are only correct because you claim absolute protection for yourselves, which is more than the MMMAA does for the doctors here. We should be able to sue senators for the harm their decisions have or will cause. Doctors only affect one person or one family. You affect hundreds or hundreds of thousands of people. But don't worry, you have free legal services from Gov. Guam, but I suggest we take that away too. If all this happened, the malpractice against you, the lawsuits against you, the litigation against you, et cetera, the result would be no one would take your job. No one would put themselves or their families at risk like to take that. And if they did take those risks, I'm sure that they would demand an awful lot more money. They would probably also decide not to do anything that might get them sued, so they wouldn't put themselves on out on a limb. I have a question. Does this sound familiar? If you want to make things fair, get rid of the Guam Claims Act, then see if you can get anyone to work at GMH. Find out how many frivolous lawsuits will get filed. Heck, if it's good for the goose, it's good for the gander, as they say. Finally, I would like to address your belief that it is too costly for people to do arbitration. We can stand here all day and argue whether arbitration, litigation, arbitration, litigation is more expensive, yet in the end, it probably depends on the case and the individuals involved. Instead, I would suggest you find ways to fund the process, to get these people who are in need, to get them the money, to get the resolutions that they desire. First, you would need to identify who these people are, what income bracket or what hardship defines these people who need help. Second, start a fund that they can draw on. The doctors, along with Senator T. Moon Barnes, have proposed an increase in our licensing fees. We suggested 150. I'll put it out there that most of the doctors will agree at 250. Are the lawyers willing to do the same? They're involved in this process too. You know, $100, $1,000 licenses adds up pretty quickly. But doctors are willing to do this, hopefully lawyers are willing to do this, and I would ask you senators, are you willing to designate that a portion of your salary will go to these people in need because you're involved in this also? In fact, I have a very good suggestion on how to give that money back. Give the people the money back that you took. Why don't you give them back the money that was listed as a retroactive pay raise? Thank you very much. Bebe Guam.
Thank you very much. I'm going to open it up now for questions from my colleagues. I would like to recognize the presence of Senator Shelton, and just for the record, I'm going to recognize that we have with us Senator Mary Torres, Senator James Moylan, Senator Jocelyn Augustine, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Talina Nelson, Senator Telo Titegui, and Senator Sabina Perez. Dr. Haddock, before you leave, if I could just, I know the testimony you read was on behalf of someone else, but it talked about telehealth doctors will not be covered if this law is passed. Are they currently covered by malpractice insurance on Guam?
The speaker, that question was directed towards me.
Well, oh, sorry. I guess, I don't know if you want to answer on her behalf or not.
I don't believe in the letter. I don't recall her mentioning that malpractice insurance wasn't currently available. I believe she spoke about addressing the increase in healthcare cost and not malpractice insurance.
Okay. I thought they talked about telehealth. All right, we'll do it later then when she's available.
The telehealth coverage, I'm uncertain if the telehealth coverage would cover the ones that do telehealth remotely from the states to Guam. That was the verbiage on that, speaker.
And I know that I have said some things. I don't remember calling doctors bullies or selfish, as somebody has testified here today, but I did call them out on the threats that I think they have been making, and again, there's threats tonight that we will lose our election. Well, I accept that. I want to know if, you know, well, I did check into the Guam Board of Allied Health term limits, and the Guam Board of Medical Examiners actually has term limits. But as far as I could tell, when I reviewed this, under my term, the Guam Board of Allied, I mean Guam Board of Medicine, had not exceeded their term limits. But I was not able to locate any term limits for the Guam Board of Allied Health, so Ms. Dr. Joseph, if you have that, please provide that to me. I would appreciate it. And I don't remember, and the thing about the checks and balances, so the small claims, you're objecting to the small claims amount also of the $20,000, so would you recommend that we continue to force those who have small claims in those amounts to go through
What I'm suggesting is that you can fix the bill, but lowering, or raising, excuse me, the small claims issue, that's not where, I mean, for, let me start over. Those people affected by Bill 112 include dentists, nurses, cosmetologists, affects every member of my staff, nursing and otherwise. And when you are talking about malpractice, you got to remember, it's not doctors that face most of the malpractice cases, it's nurses.
All right. I'm asking about the small claims, yes.
But as regards to the term limits?
No, the small claims, okay. Yes, the bill affects exactly the same people who the original medical malpractice mandatory arbitration law covers, exactly the same. We did not change a thing there. It's exactly the same people who are covered. And this is a special protection that's being provided to that class of people and not a punishment that is being provided to that class of people. It's a special protection that these laws provide to that class of people.
Similar to the protection you get as a senator.
I don't get any protection as a senator, and by the way, that's another thing I wanted to say.
Can I sue you?
There is no such protection for suit against lawyers. There's no such protection for suit against any other profession on Guam.
I can't sue Gov. Guam.
Gov. Guam is a whole other act.
Because Gov. Guam can't afford it, people sue Gov. Guam.
Yeah, I know. A lot of doctors want to talk about the government of Guam. That's a whole other law. It's a totally separate law. It's always been separate. It was derived from the Organic Act, which gave sovereignty to the government, and the government only waives it when it wants to. In fact, the legislature, very recently, because these laws had sat idle for so long, raised all the caps on the Government Claims Act so that patients could claim more if they were entitled to it. But I want to thank all of you, Mr. Duñez, Ms. Taga, Dr. McNinch, Mr. Leon Guerrero, and Dr. Haddock. Thank you for testifying. Senator Perez, did you have any questions for the panel?
Maybe I'll just try to keep this really short. So, Dr. Joseph, so what do you think would be a way to limit frivolous claims?
Why don't you start with a cap? You do the cap with the Guam Claims Act? And by the way, I will give you a good example of a frivolous lawsuit instituted by the government of Guam. Gov. Guam has been convicted, and I did say convicted, of filing a slap lawsuit against me. They didn't like me, they don't want me, they filed a frivolous lawsuit. The judge said that the only reason that lawsuit went forward was because the government of Guam wanted to cause me economic and social harm, and you were convicted of that. So if this government does that, don't you think your people are going to do it?
Senator Perez, any more questions?
Maybe I'll reserve it for the next panel. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Senator Titegui, any questions?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the panel. I'm sorry it's taking so long, but I greatly appreciate your testimony. You know, in the letter from, that you read, Carla, earlier, I had read that it was sent to us and had an opportunity to read it, and there was a section there that says that at least, you know, find a way to lower arbitration, the cost. So, you know, I'm glad to see that the testimony indicated, or basically proved, that arbitration is quite expensive and difficult, and I'm glad to see that some doctors are seeing that. I greatly appreciate your testimony, Mr. Leon Guerrero. You always bring a lot of insight and especially your experience to the table. Dr. Joseph, some of the comments that you made, you said unconstitutional. I wasn't quite sure what you meant by that, that this is not, I'm sorry, the mask thing, sometimes it's hard to understand, but what did you say by unconstitutional?
No, I said it has survived challenges for constitutionality. In fact, the case with David Lubovski was recently decided in court that the act is constitutional and organic, and I believe, if I get this right, the court said that the charges he needed to put forward for the medical, the arbitration was $11,000 for an $11 million lawsuit.
Well, I don't know if you realize that the District Court of Guam also, the judge also sent a question to the Superior Court of Guam on the unconstitutionality of this law to indigent people, a question that was sent to them. So you have a District Court of Guam stating this concern for indigent people and able to avail them some of the judicial systems, putting a roadblock and calling it almost, you know, unfair, same as unconstitutional.
You are discussing a question put forward as where I'm suggesting.
By the District Court.
A decision made by a court. Please, they are not the same. The decision was made by the court. You are saying a question was made to somebody else. That is not the same. Please, don't muddy the waters. You're better than that.
I'm pretty sure you understood what I said, that the District Court was asking the Superior Court on a question, on the constitutionality of this current law for indigent people. So I'm not sure if you know that, but you might want to read it. It should be on the website. You can read about what they're questioning and why they question it.
And again, that is a question. That is not a decision. Stop muddying the waters. You are better than this.
I said question. It was a question, Dr. Joseph. I said question.
So why even bring it up?
So, the next one is a timeline. The next time, you mentioned a timeline. You said that this is going to be going on for, you know, there's no timeline to this. In the law itself, there is a section that talks about if the bill became law, there is a certain time of when any kind of malpractice happened or a person was injured, that there is a timeline.
I believe it's a one-sentence statement in the bill that says any one party can decide how far back this goes. This is Bill 112. I've read it.
Yep, and there's a place there that talks about accrued, and it talks about to ensure...
Approved by one side of the argument, not both sides.
Actually, there is a timeline on this, but I'll be happy to show you two afterwards, or email you that section of the law and explain it.
Put it up on the screen for everybody, please.
Absolutely. If that's what you want, then, okay.
Put it up on the bill, because it's a one-sentence thing. It says that there's no time limit.
Okay. All right, so, section eight? Yeah, it's regarding the, okay, for the sake of time, I've been asked to continue on, but this has to be within the bill, and it talks about accrue, so I'll be happy to talk to you afterwards about this. But, okay, and then the other one that you said was court, make it shorter. This bill obviously has a timeline for a magistrate judge to answer the question within 20 days. So there is, it is much shorter than arbitration, to get some kind of answer, whether there is merit if a standard of care was met. So you also said, well, you talked about Board of Allied Health and a lot about the Board of Allied Health Medical. So I'm going to look at this, I'm going to have the speaker go ahead and ask the next one, and I'll come back to this section of the law so you can see it.
About the time limits, or they're getting through the process very quickly. You mentioned that the magistrate has up to 20 days to deal with this. The magistrate is just the first step. From there, it goes on and on and on in litigation. So it's not just 20 days. The litigation, these people that have suffered these problems, will continue forever. Court cases in Guam take years, years. When I was illegally raided eight years ago, my civil rights trial starts next Tuesday. Eight years. All because the government slowed us down. People can slow this down. You can't tell me that the magistrate gets it done in 20 days and then the case is over. These people will be suffering for years. They don't know what litigation is to go through like that. Arbitration is over and done with in a relatively short time, okay? And I've had arbitration take one year, and I've had arbitration take six years.
Right, but, Mr. Dr. Joseph, the whole point of the bill is we're not affecting the litigation, we're affecting the pre-litigation screening. The pre-litigation arbitration that currently exists is being proposed to be replaced with a pre-litigation arbitration by consent of the parties so that they agree to the terms so that they can reduce the costs, or a pre-litigation mediation so that upon the agreement of the parties as well.
And if they don't agree, it goes to the magistrate.
And if they can't agree, then a pre-litigation screening panel or screening by a magistrate judge. That's what the bill does.
A magistrate judge who has no background in medicine, as where the arbitration gives us a lawyer, a medical person, and a layperson.
Yes, two panel members who are not...
I would rather rely on the opinion of three people than one people.
Okay, yes.
I would rather rely on the opinion of a jury than a judge.
All right, I see that, and that is a common thread in testimony, that judges are in your, that they don't like judges, but, okay, we're going to move on. Senator Nelson? Senator Brown?
Madam Speaker, I understand there are a number of people that want to testify this evening, and I certainly do appreciate everyone that's come to testify, whether we agree or not on this issue. I hope that collectively through this dialogue, we can come to some consensus, because there are people in our community that are hurting as a result of this as well, and I think we need to keep that in... And I think we need to keep that in perspective tonight. I think we can be as patient as we can, so that we can hear collectively the testimony of those that are here. I hope this is not a forum to debate this bill. I don't, I'm not here to debate this bill this evening. I'm here to get the input of members or our community that desire to testify on this bill. So with that, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Duennius?
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. I also have come to listen to all the presentations. I want to thank this panel in particular. And I also want to especially thank Dr. McNinch for reaching out and recognizing this as a deliberative process and offering his help. And I think we all need to come together to try to find a solution, if this bill can be amended going forward, to try to seek redress that it was intended to seek. Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey. Senator Torres?
Madam Chair, I'm just looking forward to having the others who have shown up here after a long day's work to testify, to have the opportunity to come in. And we need to get all the testimony, and this is clearly a very polarizing, very heated, very hateful type of event tonight. I just wish that we would get everybody's voices out, because it's far too stressful right now. We've just got to move on and just put it all on the record and then reconcile it and really do what's good. Find the middle ground. What is good? What is the answer? What is the problem and what is the answer? But I would just hope that we can facilitate having everybody in. I believe there are 40 to 50 people outside. So please, let's just move on.
Thank you. Senator? Senator Sinagastin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to thank the panel for being here tonight. And I'm going to take up the offer of Dr. Ron McNinch. And I'm going to take the notes of what Dr. Joe, you brought up. Dr. Joe, I know you a long time also. And my priman, Walter, Tony. We're going to, I'm very concerned. I'm very familiar with the patient here, what happened. And I'd like to just bring equality and just, let's come to terms what we need to fix. And let's just, if we need to do the amendment on the bill, we'll do the amendment. But let's come to terms with what we need to do and come to an agreement that everybody is taken care of. Doctors and also patients, everybody. That's all I'm after. Fairness across the board, no matter what. And then we'll move from there. Thank you very much for your attendance tonight.
Senator Moilen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no questions for the panel, and I wish we could be able to hear the rest of the speakers as well. However, I was asked by the vice speaker, who had to leave with your approval, to read a letter from Superior Court of Guam from Honorable F. Carbelito, Phil Carbelito, Chief Justice, in response to questions that the vice speaker had written to the chief justice regarding the bill.
Perhaps, Senator, then we can read that at the end of the testimonies.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll allow it.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Shelton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions at this time. I'd like to just thank the panel for all of the discussion tonight, the testimony. I look forward to hearing everyone who's still waiting outside. Sisus Massey.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you again to the panel. You are excused and sisus massey. Please be safe. We have next Dr. Maria Gladys Linsangan, Yehagan Pamalawen, Dr. Frankie Mandiola, Dr. Yasuhiro, Luwan Nguyen, I believe this is Dr. Nguyen, Rosario Perez, Dr. Frankie Mandiola, Dr. Yasuhiro, Luwan Nguyen, Dr. Vincent Duennius, Dr. Jolene Uggan. Is Dr. Titanoe still here? Okay, so Dr. David Lubowski, Dr. Alexander LG Longguerrero, Dr. Bailey. Can you just raise your hand real quick if I've called you, so I know Dr. Linsangan is here? Dr. Frankie Mandiola? Is Dr. Frankie Mandiola here? Dr. Yasuhiro? Dr. Luwan Nguyen? Dr. Vincent Duennius? Dr. Jolene Uggan? David Lubowski is on the Zoom, and Dr. Alexander L. Longguerrero? Oh, she, okay, that's her. Okay, Dr. Bailey is not here, so... Dr. Tia La? Dr. Tia La? No? Oh, okay, Tia La, sisus massey. Okay, we have... All right, let's begin. Dr. Linsangan, please state your full name for the record, and please proceed.
Honorable Speaker Terah Lee, honorable senators, good evening. My name is Dr. Gladys Linsangan. I am one of the board-certified pediatricians practicing on island for 18 years now. Thank you for allowing me to speak against Bill 112. I have written a detailed letter to the senators sponsoring Bill 112, and I have discussed the difficulties general pediatricians face in the absence of the different pediatric subspecialties that can make the difference between life and death among the sick acts of our patients and the added pressure we all have to go through as we ask for help and at times even beg for it from off-island subspecialists and on-island adult consultants on behalf of our patients. The pediatric department likewise sent an emotional plea signed by almost all of the active pediatricians on how we strongly believe that Bill 112 will put the lives of our young ones in danger, especially our poor patients who cannot afford to go elsewhere for care. We also strongly believe that it will jeopardize the future of our health care on island. The medical community do not support this bill because we believe this was created without a full understanding of the complexities of medical care and the different health care issues both providers and patients face on a daily basis here on Guam. We believe that this bill, if enacted, will affect the standard of care on Guam and for the worse. Comparing Guam to the mainland is not logical. Our physician counterparts in the mainland do not need to extend their scope of practice to take care of their patients because of easy access to subspecialty care and easy transfer of complex patients to other centers of medical excellence. For example, Guam has two hospitals, but only one has a neonatology and pediatric ward. We have no pediatric intensivist, yet we have a five-bed pediatric ICU unit with patients being managed by general pediatricians. This will never happen in the mainland. We have one neonatologist for the entire island with a neonatal ICU that has a capacity for six critical and 10 intermediate care beds. And unfortunately, our only neonatologist will leave this August with no firm replacement in sight. After August, the care of the most vulnerable of all our children, the premature newborns and those born with congenital anomalies and other illnesses, even before they take their first breath, that need specialized care, will again fall in the care of the general pediatricians. Once again, you will never see this happen in the mainland. As you can see, even with the current arbitration law that you're all trying to repeal, Guam has a hard time recruiting for these essential subspecialties in pediatric intensive care and neonatology care, which hospitals in the mainland maintains in their roster of physicians. This problem is brought about by our unique, isolated location and, sad to say, compounded by our worn-out medical facilities. With the passing of Bill 112, things will be even worse, and Guam will even have a harder time recruiting not just subspecialists, but likewise general specialists in the field of both pediatrics and internal medicine. Most of the physicians here chose to move and stay here because of family ties on island and nearby countries. Once this bill passes, despite these family ties, new physicians may have to weigh the benefit of coming back versus having their family relocate to where they have the support of the different subspecialties for their patients in the mainland. It will be a less stressful practice than the one that they will have to endure here. Majority of Guam's current pediatricians have been here for more than 15 years. And soon, we need new pediatricians to come in over and take care of the younger population. This bill will make it difficult to entice and encourage new blood to come in. Who will take care of our children in the years to come? Please think about your grandchildren's children. Who will take care of them? This bill will create a vacuum in medical care, and sad to say, it will be its lasting legacy. Yes, it's not malpractice to practice beyond our expertise, but practicing so is not ideal and recommended either. Most physicians on Guam have been practicing far and beyond what we have spent years training for. And in doing so, we have willingly exposed ourselves to potential malpractice. We do so because if we don't, nobody will. And if we don't, we may not give our patients a fighting chance to survive. However, this bill will make physicians mindful of the limitations of their training and will find it uncomfortable to continue to do the same because of fear of any potential malpractice. After all, just like everyone else, physicians also have families and employees to support and have dreams to work for. Narrowing our scope of practice will lead to more off-island referrals, and worse, may cause more preventable premature deaths and increase morbidities among our patients. This will be the direct consequence of Bill 112. As for the argument that physicians protect each other, such statement is unfounded and definitely is not true here on Guam. Each department does peer review on morbidities and mortalities. We follow protocols on how to diagnose and treat medical problems set forth by the different specialty organizations. And each department develops criterias on how and when patients are classified in the hospital. We base our recommendations after review of a detailed history provided by the patient or the parent's patient, or the patient's parents, which, to be helpful, is expected to be true and correct. We then look at the objective physical findings, including laboratory and radiological results that can never be manipulated nor changed. There will be cases when our training and knowledge as physicians will be tested by a different outcome that deviates from what is expected. But we base our recommendations on what is the expected set of action when presented with the said findings. And in the end, we base our recommendations on facts and facts alone. Unfortunately, we cannot save everyone. And even as much as we wish we could, the reality is, we cannot. What we can do as a community is to continue to strive to move our health care system forward, upgrade the facilities, and entice providers of different subspecialties and the different disciplines of medicine to come to Guam and strengthen the state of our health care system. Bill 112 will have the opposite effect. It is so difficult to read and hear the news that portrays physicians as a greedy bunch of professionals who just want to protect their money and status as if the last year and a half did not happen, when the public celebrated and saluted the frontliners who dared to risk their lives and even that of their loved ones just to continue to do their jobs and save lives. Where was our love for money when we have all dared to lose it all? By daring to lose our lives and even that of our loved ones just so we can continue to see and help our patients? What changed that suddenly these physicians became greedy baby killers just because we think Bill 112 is not what the island needs and is not for the best interest of our patients? The World Health Organization wrote an extensive article on how to ensure delivery of quality health care in any community. And the number-one foundation on their list is that of having health care workers that are motivated and supported by the government and the community at large. Bill 112 does not do that. It has lowered the morale of the health care providers on island. And frankly, given what health care has demanded most of us, from most of us here in Guam, it made most of us reflect and wonder on how we can still do our jobs and help our patients and yet not compromise our livelihood and the future of our families and that of our employees. Bill 112 successfully did what COVID did not succeed in making us do. Bill 112 is making most of us ask ourselves the difficult question of whether it will still be worthwhile to stay on with a narrow scope of practice or move on and leave the island we have called home, the patients we have come to love, and the job we continue to do with passion even in the midst of the pandemic. I hope the honorable senators will come to understand that Bill 112 is not what my poor patients need. As a general pediatrician, who have served the indigent population from day one, who have witnessed their struggle for health care access due to transportation and monetary issues, to their problems with comfortable housing and sanitation issues, this legislature can do so much better than this. Bill 112 is not what they deserve. In the end, I hope the legislature will make a decision based on what is best for the majority and work for the best interest of our health care system. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Linsangan. Dr. Yasuhiro?
Yes, thank you very much. Before I start, I wanted to correct, make a correction on one of the testimonies. The National Practitioners' Data Bank does not record how many lawsuits or malpractice suits have been filed. It's actually how many cases have been completed and deemed malpractice. There is a big difference, so please note. Thank you very much, senators, for your time. I see a lot of familiar faces and probably treated a lot of your parents or elders, and so I guess that makes me a manamko. Okay, so, dear senators, my name is Stanley Yasuhiro, and I'm in opposition of the bill. Most of you know me, but for those that don't, please allow me to introduce myself and my background as context to my testimony. I'm a 56-year resident of Guam, arriving with my family in '64 in the efforts of my father supporting the Vietnam conflict from Naval Station Guam. I went through second to 12th grade in Guam DOE schools and graduated from GW in '75, then graduating from college in California and on to dental school at Marquette University School of Dentistry, graduating in 1983 with a P.R. Fouchard Academy Award presentation. I was a pro tech... I was a Pro-Tech awardee for dental education, which covered one-third of my dental education expenses and spent thirteen years practicing on Guam to repay the debt, the debt owed to UOG and various banks. The two-thirds of the educational debt were student loans at eight to fourteen point five percent, so it was pretty expensive. I came back to Guam because this is where I grew up. My friends and family were here. Dentistry was in need on Guam and felt it was my duty to help fill that need. I served on the Peer Review Committee for Guam Dental Society in the eighties to the two thousands, appointed and served in the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees from nineteen ninety-two to nineteen ninety-four, and also served on the Guam Board of Examiners for Dentistry from two thousand five to two thousand ten, four years of it which is as a chairman of the licensor board. We investigated complaints from the public and completed the investigations. Some of the findings were for the claimant and some were for the respondent. The claimants would be the patients and the respondents would be the doctors. Some of the claimants wanted to pursue a hearing and we did that accordingly. The Attorney General's Office managed the hearing under the court system, Guam Board of Examiners for Dentistry and the Attorney General's Office represented the public in cases where a fault was found against the respondent and at no cost to the claimant. So here's just a few statistics that is kind of relevant and one was heard previously. And number one, currently seventeen states present claimants with the task of exhausting external dispute resolution mechanisms, such as direct resolution, peer review, license board investigations, license board legal hearings, and prior to filing a malpractice suit. So seventeen states require that. Number two, thirty-three states have damaged caps on malpractice awards and those states with no caps will allow the judge to set the caps awarded to the claimants if found with malpractice. Three, statute limitations applies in all cases. Four, medical expert testimony is permitted on Guam currently due to the existing mandatory medical malpractice arbitration act, along with thirty-two other states. And now going into the actual bill, to make this testimony retentive and a bit more memorable when you vote on it, I will list the reasons why it is a bad bill. Number one, the intent of the bill is to allow claimants or plaintiffs by trying to eliminate the arbitration fees and go directly to a pay-for-play malpractice pre-trial hearing for monetary compensation. This means the claimant will have to have money to pay for this proposed pre-trial hearing process in this Bill 112-36. So from this, there is misrepresentation in this bill in that the claimant will have to have money to go to a pre-trial hearing, which right now is I'm hearing that people can't pay and that, so this is the same situation. In the current law, there is no requirement to pay for license board, attorney general, judicial hearing. However, this bill does more than the attempt to reduce cost of suing a provider. Those of you who have hired an attorney to litigate in court for months, you know this is not true and is unrealistic, as anything done in the court will cost you. This is a very misleading point. Anyone who has had months-long court battles will attest that there are court fees, subpoena, witness fees, and especially attorney's fees that you need to pay. The arbitration fees are mostly the same thing. There is an administrative fee for the arbitration members, of which there are three, of their choice and presiding the arbitration case. This one-time cost could be split up or borne totally on the loser of the case, which may also be the claimant as well. Basically, this bill is trying to eliminate paying for three people who will decide on an outcome of your case. As for the pre-trial hearing and subsequent court litigations that this bill stipulates, you still incur court costs, paying for expert witnesses, court filings, court time, judge, paying for the judge, judge's time, and court personnel cost. So who really wins in this particular situation? It is not the claimant or the respondent, the one being sued, who still have to pay court costs and attorney's fees. Is it really cost-saving or is it pay now or pay later? Number two, this bill is redundant and the current options that claimants have are free to little cost. Currently, there are four options to have malpractice situations rectified and/or settled. A, go directly to the doctor clinic and deal with the problem or settle. B, go to their society, which would have a peer review system to get a consensus on how the case was handled with a peer review judgment that could be used by either party. C, go to their professional licensing board to file a complaint against the person in question and have the board investigate. D, go to the professional licensing board and request the board hearing to settle the case legally if the board finds case is warranted after their investigation. This hearing process is defined in the GCA, the Guam Code Annotated, and please review ten GCA Sections 12209 and 12210. This hearing is run by the Attorney General's Office and the Courts of Guam. A hearing officer or judge will be appointed as well as a counselor for the board and the claimant at no charge. The respondent will most likely hire an attorney to represent board and the claimant, I'm sorry, to represent them. So there is no cost to the claimant, yet if the respondent is found guilty, the claimant could settle with the respondent or could go for a lawsuit if they still choose to do so. Again, at this point, there is no cost to the claimant. And what else happens if the board finds fault by the respondent? Finding against the respondent goes immediately to the National Practitioners' Data Bank, as only the licensing boards can enter information into the bank. This is where all U.S. licensing jurisdictions look into at the credentialing process for application for a license to practice. This is a list that the provider does not want to be on if they want a career as a healthcare provider in the U.S. This bill's pre-trial hearing has no teeth, except using the findings for real, for the real trial after, and it is not free. Wasn't this mentioned to the claimants? I don't know. Perhaps the question was asked to the wrong person. This is the same process in most states in the nation, but the health professional, professionals license office could explain all of this to you. So if a pre-trial hearing with no teeth, no remediation, and with a cost is truly the intent, then this bill is redundant, as well as waste of time and money as the hearing process by an impartial judiciary system is already in process at no charge to the claimant. Number three, this bill proposes to remove and change majority of the current law against frivolous malpractice protection and litigation with no regard for frivolous claims, no remedies for those of us who are not able to purchase malpractice insurance and have no equal protection as the claimant within the laws of Guam. Bill 112-36 presumes all providers are guilty and must prove innocence. The current malpractice arbitration law was formulated by many people, both in various healthcare fields and lawyers. These people took an older nineteen seventies law that was disputed and made it better, using existing laws from various states in the nation. However, this bill, rather than improve the intended purpose, attempts to remove and rewrite malpractice suits into a simplified law that is not, that has no protection for the healthcare system on Guam. The current law was intended to help attract more doctors to Guam and to give protection to the providers by attracting malpractice insurance companies to sell policies here at a lower premium due to our liability and low numbers of subscribers. As an example, this bill makes the magistrate judge make judgment on the choice of medical procedure. This is not only a mistake, but it is also asking the judge to commute, commit an illegal act. If the magistrate judge is to be the sole judge of the case, he is choosing a course of treatment over another. Only licensed professionals, according to GCA, can make opinions on treatment. Therefore, the judge will be practicing the healing arts without a license. This is illegal and dangerous for the public. This bill will bring our healthcare, number four, this bill will bring our healthcare back to the pre-nineteen nineties as the number of providers will drop and availability of specialty care will all return to its past level of healthcare due to the potential increase in frivolous cases, costs, and ridiculous malpractice premiums. Guam was listed as an area of need for many, for many areas in the healthcare into the nineteen nineties. U.S. public health system officers and doctors came to Guam to help with the need. UOG's Pro-Tech awards were designated, were designed to help fill in those voids. In the medical system, all doctors have a specialty because Guam law for medical licensure requires it, but not all specialty areas are in demand enough to sustain two specialists. One specialist, not enough. Seeking for specialty care may be a good reason for travel, but what if a family member is in emergency, is in an emergency need such as a subdural hematoma or mandibular cellulitis and there is no one willing to care and risk frivolous lawsuit? The people of Guam who seek specialty care would have to travel off island for care. Appointment intervals for treatment, which is getting long currently, will lengthen even more due to the poor doctor per population ratio. Several years ago, when the initial idea of having Marines transferred to Guam from Okinawa, several federal teams made assessments on the island's capabilities in various healthcare fields for the military and their dependents' healthcare needs. Though the Marines, the Armed Forces, TRICARE, and federally contracted group found Guam to have adequate number of providers access health, U.S. Inspector General Office deemed Guam inadequate for the military's healthcare needs if the transfer of Marines were to occur. Up until the nineties, there were no cancer treatments, no cardiac treatments, no ophthalmic surgeries, no urology, no podiatry, and very limited in other services, such as orthopedics, general surgeries, respiratory, and renal care. This bill, number five, this bill, last, last point on this area, section, this bill discourages our healthcare sons and daughters of Guam to return back home and practice their profession while holding three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars in education debt. They're what the islands need, island needs, providers with an emotional connection. They are the ones who will stay through thick and thin and once in a while, there'll be a transplant like myself that ends up calling Guam a home and returns to practice. I have been practicing for thirty-eight years without malpractice coverage. Why? Because insurance companies don't like covering dentists. And I received one quote and it was expect, actually about, actually is about thirty to forty thousand per year. I don't know what it is now. This was, thank you. This was in, this was in the nineties. So for the senators who are sponsoring this bill and those voting for this bill, here are some questions for you and your constituents if you pass this bill and your constituents asks you why you voted for this bill. Number one, no protection from frivolous lawsuits as arbitration is gone and no cost to claimant and attorney as they know doctors have no time to litigate will lose reputation and patients just from the news of a lawsuit, regardless if the doctor was in the right and so is willing to settle out of court. This is extortion. So doctors will pull back their scope of treatment to avoid this situation. Number two, this bill leaves all decisions to the pre-trial magistrate judge only. Questionable ramification on the judge if this were to happen. Do you put that judge in jeopardy? Three, due to risk of practicing in Guam, we will see a reduction of service. This is not, this is not hysteria, this is not, it's happening, as we heard in other testimonies. So what do you do when people are in need for more healthcare? Send everybody off island? I think somebody proposed that, that legislature create a fund and send everybody off island for specialty care. Number four, if any of your family members have sudden needs for care and no one is willing to treat in fear of a lawsuit, what do you do? You know a doctor that could help, but is not in that particular field of practice as in, and is in fear of helping because there is no protection. What do you do? There are mandated treatments in Guam law, mandated treatments in Guam law, but cannot be fulfilled because there is no one in the field. What do you do? Last page. And the last point is, a son or daughter of Guam wants to come home and treat the people of their own home, but the enormous education costs and the chance that a frivolous lawsuit may happen, do you think you would come home? Are you denying their return home to practice their sacrifice, debt, and uncertainty to avoid financial disaster in a frivolous court case? In conclusion, these are serious concerns. This is not just about trying to help someone wanting retribution against doctor or clinic. This bill will affect everybody on Guam. This bill is a misleading bill on lowering the cost of the malpractice suit without mentioning the actual out-of-pocket costs to those involved. It removes incentive for providers to practice on Guam by opening up frivolous lawsuits. Are you willing to bet against the health of your constituents? My recommendations are still the same as I reported in testimony a year ago in this very room on the same matter, except today with one addition, and that addition is do not pass this bill. Those at the fact-finding hearing had no questions or discussions afterwards. There are so many loopholes in our current laws that when applied during a hearing or court trial, looks as though flaws protect the respondents. These loopholes cannot be plugged up with one little bill. It is time-consuming and takes more thought and effort to clean up the existing laws as there are so many, but it must be done so concerns such as this will not be an issue in the future. A simple bill is not going to remedy this issue and will create another issue affecting the entire island. As a representative of government of Guam agency, I was taken to Superior Court and also to Supreme Court while counseled, while counseled by AG's office on an alleged FOIA violation while serving on the Guam Board of Dental Examiners. Both courts acquitted the case. Government officials are not immune to court cases as stipulated in GCA. So if you pass this bill, you will be ready to, will you be ready to accept legal responsibility for this bill and the aftermath that you have created? For the sake of people of Guam needing and dependent on continued healthcare, please do not pass this bill and please work on a better, comprehensive, well-thought-out bill to fix this problem. Please contact me for any questions or comments. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Dr. Yasuhiro. Dr. Luwan Wen?
Thank you, Senator Trelawney. Thank you, senators, for having me here. I'm Dr. Luwan Wen, born and raised on Guam, a former national tennis player and gold medalist at the Micronesian Games. Currently, I'm a family practice physician at American Medical Center and founder of New Gen Physical Therapy. Dr. Yasuhiro went very technical and on the details of, you know, some of the rebuttals, but I kind of want to share my story and just kind of the psychology of what I'm thinking at this. But I kind of want to share my story and just kind of the psychology of what I'm thinking at this, this time. So I really want to thank you for giving me this time and to share my concern and point of view. And I'm invested in the people of Guam. I represented Guam in different arenas. And over the years of competing for Guam in tennis, I, I just developed this underdog mentality. And I take great pride when our athletes compete well on the world stage. On the medical side, you know, both hospitals have adapted quickly to respond to the pandemic. And with the leadership of the National Guard, the public health, Dr. Juan Wen and among others, we, I believe we are in the top ten in the world with the highest percentage of population of vaccinated people for COVID. And these type of accomplishments and inspire me to give, and give me hope that Guam can defy a lot of odds. And I made a conscious decision to move back to Guam six years ago. And I knew I would have complex cases walk into the clinic such as a heart attack. And I might have to bear that heartache of not able to save that patient because I can't, because they can't fly off island to have a cardiac stent. Comparatively, when I was practicing in Virginia, Ohio, where the standard of care was, I could arrange for cardiac intervention in just ninety minutes. But despite these limited resources, I decided to come back home because I felt like I could make a difference by working with the legislature, legislature, the senators and my colleagues to bring more innovative solutions or situations unique to Guam. So over the years, just the last five years, I've tried to solve certain needs and improve access to healthcare in my own way. I don't have investors, you know, it's just me and, and I've been. Then just for example, you know, the wait time for physical therapy was about a month while my patients suffered in pain for, for that whole time. And I took that leap to open up a physical therapy clinic to decrease that time by just a half. And just recently, I noticed that one of the many reasons that there is overcrowding in the hospital was people were waiting to get home care. And so I just recently launched that to help decrease readmission rates and hopefully people can get care and get discharged from the hospital. And this next really task that I really want to accomplish and contribute is the complex issue of chronic pain. And I want to add regenerative medicine department under American Medical Center and to collaborate with interventional radiologists and psychologists and various specialists to really provide a comprehensive program for this, for this issue. Unfortunately, a lot of patients turn to disability, depression and drug use if they're not adequately supported. But here's my dilemma. Some regenerative medicine practices or procedures I'd like to incorporate in this program, I utilize stateside and around the world with promising results. But fairly new that sometimes there may be not a meta analysis or enough double blind studies to really sometimes support this, but on Guam, I realized there's limited resource and sometimes you have to think out the box, you know? And so my question is, would that single judge magistrate without much medical knowledge be able to evaluate what is the standard of care in Guam in unique situations like this, if you're thinking outside the box? Cause the guidelines and standard of care can also evolve. Some specialists might have, might even use certain medications off label. And even within the same specialty, providers might have a slightly different philosophy or protocol. And every treatment has a risk and every person is unique and react differently to even the same exact treatment. So my concern is can that appointed magistrate, that single magistrate make a valid assessment between malpractice and an unfavorable outcome? That's my concern. And my other question to you is if this bill passes, you know, some of the specialists might actually retire, move off island or do not provide certain specialty procedures. I'm wondering, do you have a backup plan? You know, to fill those roles? Do you have a rolodex of physicians that you can call to fill those positions and help us? You know, I wake up every morning and I derive happiness from being able to find solutions for my patients or to refer to a provider that can find those solutions and, and that's my source of happiness. And there's a hundred reasons I'd like to dedicate my career and live out the rest of my life on Guam. But there's only one reason and probably only one reason that would trump all those reasons. And that's my family. I do my best to keep my wife and children healthy and out of harms way. But if something were to happen to them, you know, and I cannot get them the healthcare that, that they may need here on Guam, especially as a result of bill one twelve. I would have to move to an area and instinctually that's the decision I would have to make, you know, to protect my family. And I think the sentiment will be weighed among many professionals, just not just medical professionals, but other professionals when they're contemplating, when they're moving back to Guam, if they want to bring their talent back here and also raise their children on Guam. So the irony of the situation is I've, I've experienced the complication after my appendix was removed when I was ten years old at GMH. I was discharged from the hospital and a few days later, I developed an intra abdominal infection after my surgery. And at that time, the, the death rate for something like this would be maybe thirty to fifty percent. And, you know, I don't really know what happened. Maybe there was some fecal matter in my abdomen or maybe, you know, my appendix burst or potentially the surgeon didn't practice a septic technique. I don't know. But my father was obviously livid at the surgeon and blamed the surgeon. And it was easy to blame the surgeon. And at that point in time, when I was ten years old, I told my father, I want to become a physician like the family medicine doctor that saved my life, but not like the surgeon. And I don't know if that's a great premise for me at ten years old to make that decision to be a physician. But that's, that's when I decided I wanted to be a physician. And, you know, I've been on that side of that medical complication where I could have died. And I do not wish anyone to have those kinds of struggles and through disability or loss. But if there is an inherent issue in how we evaluate the physicians and, and, you know, how this court proceedings go, I just hope that the senators really sit down with the medical community to improve the system and the processes before we pass a bill that could potentially have dire consequences. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wen. Dr. Vincent Duñez.
Good evening, Madam Speaker and all the honorable senators of the thirty six Guam Legislature. I'm Dr. Vincent Duñez, Internal Medicine. Thank you for allowing me to provide testimony tonight in opposition to Bill one twelve dash thirty six. Senators, I respectfully ask you to reconsider your stance on repealing the mandatory medical malpractice arbitration act. This piece of legislation, if passed, will in no way increase access to justice for anyone seeking it. The cost of a lengthy jury trial is more prohibitive than arbitration, an expedient and less complicated process for dispute resolution. Arbitration provides a level playing field for both the plaintiff and the defendant, utilizing knowledgeable and experienced arbitrators that are case specific compared to a judge and jury selected at random. Presentation of evidence and expert testimony through arbitration is more inclusive, oftentimes painting a clearer picture of the issues at question. Speedy decisions, global Biden settlements are other benefits that can favor both parties. As a physician, I am in no way opposed to someone seeking justice if harm was done. That's their right, but the process of arbitration is many times more suitable than a jury trial in this industry and various other industries who utilize it. That's mostly my concern. Bill one twelve dash thirty six will not only be ineffective at achieving what it intends, but it aims to change a process that is already fair and just. If someone can't afford arbitration, what makes you think they're going to be able to afford a jury trial that can sometimes result in years of exhausting litigation? How will this bill change anything for these unfortunate families that lack the financial means? What we also need to understand is that the disparity of healthcare in Guam is a large scale community issue that we all play a part in from the top down. No individual or entity, entity is to blame. Medicine is complex and often oversimplified. Instead of criticizing doctors and nurses, we need to look at the matter at its core. Unfortunate adverse events are not simply a result of physician negligence or incompetence. It's a systematic failure that is well known and has long existed here. Conditions that our government has created through years of neglect and failure to prioritize. Issues that our leaders should be paying closer attention to. Shortfalls that our leaders should be taking accountability for. Overflowing hospitals, a shortage of primary and specialty care providers, lack of available medical equipment and supplies, expensive medicines. That's what really puts our people in harms way. Not our dedicated healthcare workers that do everything possible to fulfill a void and meet a demand that is just too much to bear. As leaders of our community, it is your duty to position our island for success. It is your duty to keep our people safe. The substandard environment that we practice in today on Guam puts everyone at risk, doctors and patients. We sit here today talking about individuals not being able to afford justice. What about families not being able to afford basic healthcare? Why is that not a greater concern? Our focus should be on capacity building at this point, not laying out more obstacles to stand in our way. Promoting a litigious mindset will do more harm than good and is counterproductive to what we're all trying to accomplish, better healthcare for the community. As physicians, we take an oath to do no harm. We conduct ourselves already to the highest standard because it's the right thing to do, not because we're mandated to do so. I sympathize with those who have suffered injury in the past or have lost loved ones. I really do. It's unimaginable. But this bill is not the remedy for a broken system. Prevention is key. Let's draft more meaningful legislation, draft a bill to improve access to care, a much better solution all around. In closing, senators, I plead with you to think and reflect deeply about what is at stake when you make your upcoming decisions. I ask you to do your research and make an informed decision. This is not about who's right or wrong. Both sides have valid concerns. This is about simple risk benefit. How many people will this help and how many people will this harm? And I'll make it easy for you. Bill one twelve dash thirty six is going to hurt a lot of people. Let's not have to find out the hard way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Duñez. Dr. Jolene Augen.
Good evening. Honorable senators, Madam Speaker Terlahi, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. Hafaday, Guahu C. Jolene Maatnyau Agan, Hagen, Guam. I am a pulmonologist at American Medical Center and a pulmonologist and critical care physician at Guam Memorial Hospital. I take care of patients with lung diseases and the sickest patients within the hospital. I was born here. I graduated from high school here. I completed my undergraduate degree at the University of Guam. I did not grow up with money or have a physician in my family whose footsteps I followed. I spent my childhood working to help support myself and my siblings. I became a physician solely because I lost the most important person aside from my parents in my life at the age of twelve, my grandmother. She was a smoker and got very sick. She was admitted to Guam Memorial and diagnosed with pneumonia and her condition worsened. She declined requiring her to breathe on a ventilator in the ICU. The doctors on Guam at that time could not manage the complexity of her condition and she was medevaced to Hawaii where she died the morning that my sister and I were leaving to be with her. My grandma was the matriarch of our family. She kept us together. After experiencing this great loss, I made it my mission at the age of twelve to understand what happened and become the doctor that she needed on Guam. I left this island and I did everything I thought I needed to do to get into medical school. Working odd jobs as a waitress to support myself until I landed a research position. In two thousand and five, I was afforded that opportunity. I completed medical school at the University of Hawaii at Manoa, John A. Burns School of Medicine. In two thousand and twelve, I completed my residency in internal medicine and went on to complete a three-year fellowship in pulmonary and critical care training at Los Angeles County, University of Southern California Medical Center, Keck Hospital and the Norris Institute. As soon as I completed my fellowship, I hopped on a plane and I came home to be the doctor my grandma needed. Practicing on Guam has been incredibly challenging. I wanted to leave after the first three months when I truly realized how scarce our resources were in two thousand and fifteen. I stepped into an ICU that was sorely under equipped. We didn't have the staff or the training to scratch the surface of an ICU. When I received a patient requiring stat dialysis, I had to plead for a dialysis catheter to save my patient's life. We have come a long, long way. As a physician and leader in my specialty, I have worked hard to improve ICU medicine and contribute to the overall health system of Guam to improve the quality and safety of patient care. The pandemic has taught us a lot. It highlighted the many pre-existing gaps that our healthcare infrastructure faces. We have worked tirelessly to fill in all those gaps, stretching above and beyond our scope and capacity every day. We become whoever we need to be for our patients. I become a neurologist, a hepatologist, a rheumatologist in my unit because we lack these specialists. I don't think about liability when it comes to saving a life. My patients are my priority. I become a pediatric intensivist. For some of the sickest kids at Guam Memorial Hospital, helping our pediatricians, we transfer these kids into the adult ICU. I volunteered to lead our emergency medical services, first responders as their COVID medical director without any expertise, but with the sole priority of keeping our men and women safe, using my medical license so they can deliver care for our community. Bill one one two will make providers think twice about stretching outside of our scope. Do you know how this will affect our already fragile healthcare system? How many people will be left without the care that they need? The point of arbitration is not to act as a barrier to justice. It's a filtering system so that any claim will be evaluated by knowledgeable people first. The cost is what we need to focus on, not the process itself, finding that solution. I'm pleading with you for you to see the true issues and address the island's healthcare needs. Give us more resources to help our systems improve for training, peer reviews, patient complaint investigations with the licensing boards. There are many ways that we can improve the healthcare infrastructure and identify the weaknesses in our system. In closing, any negligence should be held accountable, but this bill does not achieve that. Cizouis Maasi, I'm Dr. Jolene Maatnyau Agan, and I oppose Bill one one two.
Thank you, Dr. Agan. Dr. Alexandra Leon Guerrero.
Hafaday, Madam Speaker, Teresa Terlahi and honorable members of the thirty six Guam Legislature. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am here to express my opposition to Bill one one two. My name is Alexandra Leon Guerrero. I am a Chamorro, raised in Guam, a physician and a surgeon. In two thousand and nineteen, I moved home after being away for eighteen. In 2019, I moved home after being away for 18 years. During my time away, I dedicated myself to a lengthy, brutal, and often thankless training required to become the general surgeon I am today. I went to Stanford University, then completed medical school and general surgery residency at New York University. And when I was done with that, I spent an additional year of my life at the University of Southern California, training to be a specialist, an advanced laparoscopic and minimally invasive surgeon. That means I can do advanced and complex surgical procedures through itty-bitty incisions. Patients have less pain, shorter recovery times, shorter hospital stays, and more cosmetically appealing scars. As so many others have already stated, Guam is nationally recognized as a medically underserved area with low medical resources and a low number of providers and specialists per patient population. With my training, I could have lived anywhere, but I made the choice to move my family home. I wanted to make a difference in a community that I cared about and in one that cared about me. I feel strongly that the people of Guam deserve to have a surgeon like myself to at least try and provide the same level of care available to a patient living in California or Hawaii or New York City. While some of my mentors along the way applauded my intentions, throughout my training, there were numerous detractors and skeptics stating the reality of life for a specialist in Guam. They told me I would not be challenged because I would spend a significant portion of my time doing general surgery and not enough cases in my specialty field. This is true. They said I would not have access to the latest technologies in my field. This is true. I am trained in robotic surgery, but Guam doesn't have a robot and likely never will. They told me I would be alone in my field, that I would not have other specialists like myself to mentor me or assist me with the most difficult and complex cases. This is all true. Still, I ignored them and I moved home, and I am glad I did. In the past year and a half, I performed the first laparoscopic adrenal gland resection ever on Guam. I also performed the first laparoscopic anti-reflux surgery, the first laparoscopic inguinal hernia repair in a pediatric patient, the first laparoscopic colon resection at Guam Memorial Hospital Association, the first laparoscopic repair of a perforated duodenal ulcer, and the first laparoscopic hepatico-geduostomy with ruin y reconstruction. That's a complex surgery of the bile ducts. In the short time I have been home, I have already raised the level of surgery available in Guam. I have lost track of how many times my colleagues and patients have thanked me for coming home. And while what I am doing may seem innovative, for Guam, many of these procedures I mentioned have been standard of care in the mainland and Hawaii for over a decade. This is the reality of the challenge we face recruiting specialists to Guam. We are truly lucky that my parents and grandparents instilled in me a love for my island and a strong sense of responsibility to uplift our people. Now, as a surgeon, I am trained to assess a patient from head to toe and identify the most acute, life-threatening problem. I believe that the problem we are debating is whether we prioritize the health and access to care of the community at the expense of the individual or do we prioritize the individual's access to due process at the expense of the community? Let that sink in. There needs to be balance, and I am all for working together to find a more balanced solution. But Bill 112 is not the answer. It goes against the national trend of having some sort of pre-trial alternative dispute resolution and screening panels in medical liability or malpractice cases. This trend towards tort reform is due to the inevitable exodus of specialists and limiting of healthcare services that occurs when litigation is more accessible. It is a fact that this bill will force generalists and specialists to limit services. Many have said we often practice beyond our scope. But what does that mean? It means that even though I am not a fellowship-trained pediatric surgeon, I have sufficient knowledge and the skill set to safely and successfully perform a wide range of procedures on children. However, if this bill passes, I will no longer perform elective surgery on pediatric patients. It's not because I don't know how. It's not because I don't think I'm good at it. It's because malpractice insurance will not cover me to care for pediatric patients because I am not a pediatric surgeon. And there's a near-zero chance we will ever recruit a pediatric surgeon to Guam. The children of Guam will suffer. Our reality is that practicing beyond our scope is the only way to help people who can't fly off-island. While I want to and I'm capable of helping these patients, if this bill were to pass, I am not willing to expose myself, my family, my staff, and all my other patients to the risk that comes with doing that. Another way generalists and specialists will limit services is offering care only to insured patients. Currently, I care for anyone who walks through my door, regardless of ability to pay. This essentially amounts to the provision of free care to countless members of our island community, whether they are of low socioeconomic status or just between jobs and temporarily without health insurance. I do this because I believe in universal access to healthcare. More pragmatically, however, I am able to do this because the mandatory Medical Malpractice Arbitration Act shields me from the exorbitant costs of malpractice insurance and frivolous litigation, making it financially feasible for me to absorb the losses incurred by caring for our medically indigent. I wholeheartedly agree that there needs to be a way to increase legal access for members of our community who have experienced a bad outcome as a result of medical malpractice. But this should not be done at the expense of our current healthcare infrastructure that has allowed hundreds and thousands of Guamanians to get the services they require here at home, not in Manila, not in Hawaii, not in the mainland, but here, in Guam, our home, where we are surrounded by our support systems, where we have the option to continue to work while getting treatment if we so choose, where we, as parents, do not have to choose between taking our sick child off-island for medical care or staying home with our other children. I am also a patient. I was four months pregnant when I moved home. At my son's anatomy ultrasound, there was a question of a possible heart anomaly. If it weren't for Dr. Hirata, the maternal fetal medicine specialist who comes from Hawaii, I wouldn't have been able to get a fetal echocardiogram without traveling. Waiting the two weeks for him to fly here was the most stressful, anxiety-filled two weeks of my life. I reviewed every single congenital cardiac anomaly in my textbook. Gratefully, I have a happy, healthy son, and nothing was wrong with his heart. But imagine if I'd had to spend $10,000 or more to fly myself to the States to get a 30-minute ultrasound to learn everything was fine. Senators, for the sake of our community, please choose to preserve the health infrastructure we have. Say no to Bill 112 and instead, let us work together to find a way to make arbitration more affordable and accessible. Sizuus Maasi.
Sizuus Maasi, Dr. Leon Guerrero. Dr. Tia La, or Tia La.
Hafaday, and I'd just like to start off by thanking you all for the opportunity. And I'd like to thank you all for the opportunity of speaking with you tonight.
I'm sorry, can you start again? And just, yeah, put the mic very close.
Hafaday? I'd like to start off with thanking you for the opportunity of speaking with you tonight. My name is Tia La, and I'm a certified physician assistant. I graduated from St. Paul in 2014, so you can figure out how old I am from that. I received my bachelor's from the Pennsylvania College of Technology, and I received my master's of medical science from St. Francis University at the end of 2020. For those unfamiliar with what a PA is, because there are not a lot of us here, I'm an advanced practice provider similar to a nurse practitioner. So I'm trained to diagnose medical conditions, create treatment plans, write prescriptions, do minor surgical procedures. I returned to Guam to serve our community and started practicing medicine in January of this year. And I apologize in advance because I'm not practiced in politics or the intricacies of legislation, but I'd just like to open an honest discussion with you and give you some perspective from a new grad healthcare provider. And first off, I'd like to thank you, Speaker Terlahe, for bringing up this issue with limited access to patients seeking justice. I certainly was not aware that seeking justice could be so cost prohibitive. And I agree that a solution needs to be found. I'd like us to work together to find them because while I agree that your intent is in the right place, I don't think Bill 112 is the answer. If the goal of Bill 112 is to make it affordable and accessible for patients to seek justice, why can't we make arbitration affordable and accessible? Is it not possible to set aside funds for patients to access? Getting rid of mandatory arbitration altogether will make healthcare inaccessible for everyone. And to make an analogy, I wouldn't send you straight to get your leg amputated because you had a fracture. I'm sure your leg has taken you plenty of places and you'd like to keep it. Similarly, medicine on Guam has progressed so far since 1991. And part of that has been due to mandatory arbitration. Things aren't perfect right now. And I believe that rather than completely getting rid of mandatory arbitration, we can work together to fix things. And while Bill 112 is the hot topic of the day, I can see your eyes glazing over. And so I'd like to focus more on the polarization of our community that's happened as the fallout of these discussions. I was under the impression that all of us in this room do what we do because we've chosen to serve our communities. So why does it feel like our island is becoming more polarized if our goals are all the same? I'm just a person lucky enough to have the privilege of using my education to serve this island. And so are all of us here. But if you look at what's happening on social media, we don't deserve to be called quacks or cowards or incompetent. We don't deserve to be told to get out of the business. And people are saying that Guam should just get rid of the doctors. So I've cried with my patients and cheered with them with their victories. And I have stayed hours after the day is over trying to coordinate care for them on and off-islands. I chose to come back to Guam despite the significant pay cut, the high cost of living, and the severely limited resources here on the island. I apologize. Because I love our people, but if all of this had come to light, all of this toxic environment, if I'd seen this a year ago, I wouldn't have come back. And I don't think I'm alone in this sentiment. Speaker Terlahe, I saw that you were recently in a conference call with the goal of bringing more homegrown healthcare providers back to the island. The portrayal of healthcare workers by some of the supporters of Bill 112 would certainly give one considering coming back to Guam reason to pause. And I think we all need to think about the environment that we're creating for our future generations. Why does it feel like those who oppose this proposed bill are made out to be corrupt villains? We're trying to alert you to the many unintended consequences of this legislation. The vast majority of our medical community think this bill is not the answer. I find it incredibly difficult to believe that almost all of our island's healthcare providers value finances over people. And I understand that some are grieving, and my heart goes out to them. I and every other person in healthcare that I know believe that people should be responsible for their actions. In the same vein, I'd like to ask not only our senators, but also those in the media and those in the health professions and those on the island as a whole, what kind of future are we trying to shape? Are we just seeking revenge and litigation? Or do we actually want to try to create environments where we come to agreements, learn from our mistakes, and put protections in place so that these mistakes never happen again? We all have the same goal, protecting and healing the people of our island. Why does it feel like it's just, we're just sowing mistrust? So please, listen to our concerns from the medical community. We should start working together to ensure that our patients have access to what they need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. La. Doctor, can you identify yourself, please?
Good evening, Madam Speaker. My name is Dr. Maria Mariano.
Sorry. Could you repeat that?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Dr. Maria Mariano.
Mariano, okay, Dr. Mariano. Please, please proceed.
Good evening, Madam Speaker, Teri Terlahe, and honorable senators. And thank you and thank you for the opportunity to speak before you all today. I am Maria Mariano, a family physician who owns a small, solo, private practice clinic in Dedodo. I previously practiced medicine in Wisconsin and have been living and working in Guam since 2008. I oppose Bill 112 because I believe that it is not the solution for the problem it is trying to solve, and it will do immense harm to Guam's healthcare system, to my patients, and our entire community. I have been continuously board-certified for 16 years, since graduating from residency at West Virginia University in 2005. I am also a certified medical coder, biller, physician-practice manager, and outpatient documentation expert with the American Academy of Professional Coders. I have malpractice insurance, which I have never used and I hope to never need to. I have clean medical licenses and work histories in both Wisconsin and Guam. I am far from perfect, but I would like to think that I can be considered to be a good doctor, one who should not worry about Bill 112. Your honors, I am absolutely terrified of this bill. I believe that I am not exaggerating and that my fears are very valid. Please let me share three very short stories to explain why. My first story is about a kidney, a flower garden, and weeds. My first story is about a kidney, a flower garden and weeds. I had a five-year-old female patient with a severe kidney problem, too complex for me to treat by myself and who could not go off-island for medical care. She was able to get better because I referred her to an adult nephrologist who agreed to help care for her because we have no pediatric nephrologist on Guam. It would have been catastrophic for my patient and her family if that specialist did not agree. Like her, many of my patients have done well because my specialist colleagues have stretched themselves to help me care for them. The point I would like to make with this case is that Guam's healthcare system is very fragile. We lack many kinds of specialists and the specialists we do have on island only have one to a few providers each. It is quite different from Wisconsin where we had all the specialties and large hospitals available. Primary care physicians like me often must compensate for the limited medical specialists and resources in Guam. All of us physicians on island try to stretch ourselves and make the best of what we have available here individually and as colleagues, as safely as we can for our patients. And you know what? While our healthcare system has many gaps, we make it work and it has great potential to be better with time. I have lived in Guam for 13 years, long enough to see the improvements happen, like having a new hospital with GRMC and getting new medical specialists and treatments to be available on island. Many of my patients had good medical outcomes because of the improving healthcare options in Guam. My own father had life-saving emergency treatment and surgery at GRMC in 2016. I believe that the current Medical Arbitration Act was instrumental in making all these happen since it helped create an environment where healthcare can thrive and made doctors like me want to work and serve in Guam despite the limitations and challenges here. Bill 112 will negatively impact much that is good about Guam's healthcare system, which took many years to achieve. I believe that Bill 112 will make many medical specialists in Guam either leave the island or they will understandably limit the kinds of referrals that they will accept. Some specialists and clinics have already announced this. For me personally, if Bill 112 becomes law, then I will constantly worry about getting sued over a false claim. I will have to make my practice very conservative. The healthcare environment in Guam will become very difficult to work with and it will be much more challenging to take care of patients. Instead of exposing Guam's healthcare community to avoidable risk and litigation, I believe the focus should be on improving the gaps in our healthcare system, such as better supporting our healthcare boards so that they can properly evaluate any complaints against providers, making proper and fair arbitration more available for cases with merit, recruiting more medical providers and specialists on island, improving our medical infrastructure and overall further raising our standard of care. Imagine Guam's healthcare system as a vast garden of delicate flowers and true cases of malpractice as a few weeds scattered among these flowers. Bill 112 would be like throwing weed killer over the whole flower garden and destroying it entirely. It is not the solution. Let us find a way to take out just the weeds and keep the beautiful flowers alive. My second story is about a wall, justice and a gun. Having a good patient-doctor relationship is critical in medicine and achieving this is my goal with each patient who I see. They have to trust me to help them and I have to trust them that they will let me. Bill 112 will create a wall of tension and fear between doctors and patients because it creates a premise that we may mean to harm instead of help each other. I believe that Bill 112 may incentivize some patients to look for things to complain about in everything that my staff and I may do during encounters with them, despite our best efforts to help them because it would be easy to sue, instead of promoting good communication, honesty and transparency among everyone during times when things go wrong so that they can be prevented from happening again. Medicine is very complex and inherently risky. Sometimes, even if we have done everything right, patients will not get better. They will get worse or they will even die. Having bad outcomes does not necessarily mean malpractice was committed. I am not saying that doctors do not make mistakes or that there are no bad ones. I am saying that true malpractice is when gross negligence was committed, when these bad outcomes happened because the standard of care was not met. I am not afraid of legitimate malpractice claims. I believe that my medical accreditations and licenses are so tightly regulated and I follow the highest personal standards with my work that I can be responsible for myself and my actions. What I am afraid of is possibly facing illegitimate malpractice claims. Under the current Medical Arbitration Act, I fear, unlike the current Medical Arbitration Act, I fear that Bill 1112 will create an extremely litigious system where healthcare providers can be accused of malpractice and unfairly dragged through the court system without the fair chance to have a proper pre-trial screening with an appropriate forum with a medical and legal knowledge to fairly judge if a case has merit or not. Bill 112 will have just one magistrate judge with no medical background to decide a case and gives the option to go straight to small claims court for claims under $20,000. For a small, solo practice clinic like mine, even one illegitimate small claims court case will be devastating. If I am taken to court over a false claim, my clinic will not run. My staff and my patients will suffer and my performance record will be forever tarnished. That is not just. If Guam loses more medical providers and resources than it, from its already limited pool due to the litigious environment caused by Bill 112, then many more people in our community will not have access to needed medical care. That is not just. I believe that victims of true malpractice should get justice, but Bill 112 is not the solution. Justice should be for everyone, including all the rest of us. Justice should not punish the good to try to fix what is bad. Bill 112 would make practicing medicine in Guam like working with a loaded gun, always pointed at your head. Your honors, how would you all feel if you were made to work that way? Let us find a solution that will take that loaded gun away. My third and last story is about duty, risk and a mask. I became a doctor because I wanted to help people. I took an oath to first do no harm. Medicine is not just a job for me, but a calling. And my clinic is not just a business to me, but the mission. It hurts me to hear that we doctors are accused of threatening to withdraw care from our patients if Bill 112 is passed and that we only care about ourselves and not them. This is a wrong and twisted interpretation of things. What we are saying is that while we want to take care of patients, Bill 112 will create such a litigious healthcare environment in Guam that we cannot afford to take on the additional liability that comes with extending ourselves to try to compensate for the gaps in the healthcare system on island. It is my duty to serve my patients, yes. But an important part of that duty is to take care of myself, to control the risks that I take so that I can continue to take care of them. Bill 112 will make stretching myself to try to help my patient so risky that I cannot continue doing it because if I get sued, my patients may lose me and my care entirely. I have been a physician for 21 years. I love my work, my staff, my patients and our community. I am 44 years old, relatively young for a doctor, and I was planning to practice medicine in Guam until I retire many years from now and perhaps have my children follow in my footsteps and continue running my clinic after me. Bill 112, if passed, will change all of those plans. I will have to make my practice very conservative to minimize risk. And if that is not sustainable, since my family is based in Guam and I am seriously considering just giving up practicing medicine with much sadness and a heavy heart if it is not worth it anymore. If my children, who were born here, become doctors, I will strongly advise them to never come back to Guam to practice, to protect them. When you ride an airplane, all passengers are instructed that in case of an emergency, you should put an oxygen mask on yourself first before you help to put them on others. For a year and a half, as we are now, we have all been wearing masks to protect ourselves and each other from getting sick with COVID-19. Bill 112 will make practicing medicine in Guam like me putting oxygen masks on others during an airplane emergency without putting one on myself first. Like seeing patients with COVID-19 without a mask on. It is unbelievably and unnecessarily risky. It will be like committing professional suicide. Your honors, I love what I do. I want to keep trying to be the best doctor that I can be to my patients. I want to continue to serve our community so that I, like all other healthcare providers on Guam, can do so longer, safer and better. Please, I beg of you, let me have my mask. Please, do not pass Bill 112. Let us work together to find a better solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mariano. Next, we have virtually Ihaugan Fama Lawan and Mr. Lubovski. But while we are switching to virtu, oh, I guess we have to keep the panel here. Okay, so we'll switch to virtual now. Ihaugan Fama Lawan and Mr. Lubovski. Or, Mr. Lubovski, you may proceed. We can't hear Mr. Lubovski. We can't hear you. Hold on one minute. Can you please start again? State your name for the record.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. My name is David Lubovski. Can you hear me okay, senators? Thank you, senators, for allowing me to give testimony in support of Bill, in support of Bill 11236. I have this whole thing written out, but I just got derailed when I heard Dr. Marion, the last doctor, refer to victims as weeds. In her little story, victims are not weeds. Victims are our loved ones. They're our mothers. They're our children. Ash is not a weed. That was a total insult and she sort of brings it all together for me. That was a very inappropriate thing to say and I had to stop my testimony of. We are not weeds. Victims are not weeds. Silence is not golden unless you are a Guam doctor. I arrived initially on Guam in 1974. Over the years, I have worked at many agencies, Project Help, Sanctuary, Child Protective Services, Adult Protective Services, Guma Mommy, Goodwill Industries. I worked with the VA with disabled veterans. I worked in psychologists with Department of Education, family therapists, and I'm very proud to say I'm a University of Guam graduate. My whole life, I have worked with the most disadvantaged individuals of all ages, with disabilities, economic hardships, homeless, victims of abuse, runaways, kids with behavior or educational issues. This is what separates me from everyone else giving testimony today who want to keep the status quo. I am not an outsider. I have no personal agenda except to protect the people of Guam and to improve healthcare. I have advocated for others my whole life without regard to my own personal or financial needs to help people get help to survive and to succeed. And as importantly, to have a voice to be heard on Guam. I never thought I would be here again advocating for something like this. We have heard over and over from doctors' testimony and their public media postings how much they spent on medical school, malpractice and all of that. This is what separates the people I speak of and those who make this about their financial needs under the guise of medical care. The people I speak of and who I am here for today struggle just to get by on a daily basis. Their struggles are very real and much more important, in my opinion, than anyone who discusses medical school or how much they much spent on malpractice insurance. Living on Guam and working with the people on Guam, especially the manomko, I have culturally and every other way learned that people are often too embarrassed to write testimony or come forth to meetings like this or even to challenge doctors when a loved one dies from alleged medical negligence. Family members will even tell the victims, oh, no, no, do not speak up. Just drop it, forget about it. Do not embarrass us. Our doctors are always right. The victims are told, oh, please don't make us mamalo. It's a Guam cultural, historical perspective that I have learned long ago. Even when investigating abuse, child abuse at CPS and so forth, families do not want it public. This is a big part of the reason. It took 30 years to get this issue of prejudice and discrimination caused by the Arbitration Act to be brought to light. It has been 30 years of silencing those who have been killed or injured by medical negligence. Silence is golden for medical personnel who have benefited from this law financially for 30 years. The mother of the child who died from alleged medical negligence in Guam Regional Medical City, a horrible story, told me she wants to speak out about the alleged negligence, but has been advised not to do so by family members. It's exceedingly difficult to talk about a child or loved one who has died in any case. Trust me, it's really difficult. But when told by family members or others not to speak, it becomes more painful. And this is part of the reality of a lot of the victims and victims' family. They don't speak out. So life goes on. The doctors keep the status quo. I'm here today to speak also for victims, baby faith. Baby Faith, Joaquin, Charles, Aiden, Asha, Mr. Legremis. By the way, none of those people are weeds and hundreds of others, or even thousands that have been injured or killed by medical negligence on Guam over the years with no recourse to have their cases heard. And I did use the term alleged because under arbitration, you can't go anywhere. Alleged means nothing. Silence is not golden today for these people, many being children. And as I speak their names, and I hope that you hear them, there's also petition of about 3,800, last time I looked, people who have asked to change this law, the arbitration law and repeal it. Please read the petition and please read their comments. It's not just about the people in the room. There's thousands of people out there. Look at those that are writing testimony to keep the discriminatory, and it is discriminatory, arbitration, silencing law, or death law, which I call it, and look at the majority who have spoken that they should be exempt. Yes, exempt from negligent killing or injuring us. That's what the testimony today is about. Guam does have great doctors. Well, I can attest that I have great doctors. Guam has great doctors, always, always has. And this is not about great doctors. These doctors have voices, loud and clear, but we must remember those that do not have voices, who feel a lack of power to speak up. And each one of you, Senators, know people like that. You know people that want to speak up, they're embarrassed. You all know what I'm speaking about. Those are the people you must consider Bill 112 is about giving all the people of Guam a voice and protecting doctors from frivolous lawsuits at the same time. The sad reality is that the resistance against Bill 112 is about the bottom line of physicians, not Guam healthcare in most cases, and for sure, not about patient rights and not about identifying doctors who repeatedly have committed medical negligence. If this wasn't about, if this is just a public debate about the law and benefits of the law, you would not have physicians threatening senators, threatening the public, writing foias to try to get dirt on senators because they don't like a public debate and a law. When people start doing that, it's not about the public law. It's not about whether it's good or bad for Guam medical. It's about revenge. You senators received foias, that's a revenge tactic to try and find dirt on you so this bill doesn't go forward. In my opinion, that makes it personal for the people who write it. And that was written by the Guam Medical Association. Also, Dr. Blunt, addressing the Guam Medical Society in a recent communication, he told them, this will impact us financially. That was his message to them. It's in black and white. Dr. Teresa Underwood, during the last information hearings we had during the 35th legislature, she spent her whole testimony discussing the bottom line, how hard it is to get paid on Guam, to make money, and so forth. Interesting, neither doctor and none of the doctors on Guam, and I've heard of, and few even discussed it tonight, ever discuss patient rights or what to do about medical negligence, as if they do not care, their needs are put first. Even when we had, they discussing the idea about we should all get together, they talked about the lawyers, they talked about the doctors, they talked about the senators, but not one of them wanted to include the weeds. Oh, I'm sorry, the victims in the discussion about how to make the law better. The weeds are left out. With all that said, let's be clear, in my opinion, Bill 112 is not about malpractice. And it's not about poor people who cannot afford arbitration. And for sure, it's not about my son Asha. It is about a fair system for all medical consumers on Guam to be able to have their claims heard, to protect their rights, to improve medical care, and at the same time to protect the medical community against frivolous lawsuits. I don't know anyone, including and especially me, that wants to see a doctor sued. No. But how do we identify the doctors who commit medical negligence? Medical negligence is stated to be the third leading cause of death in the USA. It must be the same in Guam. Statistically, based on national stats, it's estimated that 10 die per month on Guam, 10 die per month on Guam due to medical negligence. It's the silent killer that Guam doctors want to keep silent. It's also estimated that 1% of doctors commit 32% of malpractice. These doctors are not identified in Guam due to the current law. A doctor in Guam can kill your child for negligence before lunch and be back to work after eating a sandwich, and no one knows or will ever know. Actually, that doctor can kill two or three people for medical negligence, and no one ever knows. Guam is the only place in the USA or the free world that affords this kind of cover-up or protection. Malpractice is a serial injury event. It repeats itself. Bill 112 will help to identify these doctors once and for all to improve medical care while protecting the people of Guam, the people that I'm concerned about, you are concerned about, and those that do not have voices. The untrue and sad part is that we keep hearing that Guam will not be able to get doctors if Bill 112 becomes law. This is absolutely ridiculous. This is absolutely not true. No one has shown statistics or recruiting issues to back this up. And actually, Dr. Shea himself said, we have plenty of doctors on Guam. The problem is getting specialists, and it's always been a problem to get specialists, and probably always will be, getting specialists. Dr. Shea said a few years ago, we don't need doctors on Guam. What is true is that doctors come to Guam now. What is true is that doctors come to Guam now with histories of medical negligence, or sexual misconduct, and easily get licensed here as they know they can work here without malpractice insurance, without concerns, and possibly cannot work anywhere else in the States. The Guam Board of Medical Examiners, and I've argued about this, and I've had this discussion, and they are in court now related to this. The Guam Board of Medical Examiners continues to license people with such histories. Do we want doctors from off-island to come here and hurt or kill us on sexual misconduct with the same histories elsewhere? That's what the arbitration law allows. That's exactly what we have now. Bill 112 will protect the people of Guam by identifying these doctors rather than hiding them, as is the case now. It will protect all of us and give a voice to the most disadvantaged on Guam, as well as just the average person. Let's finally tell the community that silence is not golden and they have a voice. One question, I'm sorry I've been going on so long. One question. I'll end by asking one question. Would you pass Bill 11236 if you knew it would save a child's life or a loved one's life or several lives on Guam? Well, this bill, if law, I say, would have saved Baby Faith's life at Guam Regional Medical City. I say it may have saved Asha's life, and for sure, it would have saved others as well. And if it didn't save their lives, it would have identified the doctors or others before they went off to do the same tragic negligent mistakes with others. This bill is about saving lives, not saving money for doctors. Not passing this bill means we have to sacrifice our loved ones on Guam, and there's clear statistics that support this. I do not want to see anyone go through the hell that I went through or that anyone else went or that Baby Faith went through. This bill will, identifying negligent doctors, it will improve healthcare, and it will give equity to all the people of Guam, white, cold, and non. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lubovski. I want to thank everyone. I want to thank everyone who's been waiting very patiently and know they're getting impatient, and I don't blame them. It's been a long night. And so I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have questions for this panel. Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I'm listening very closely and taking notes of all the testimonies thus far, and I'm also very interested in consensus building. And I'm thinking about, I guess, the idea of self-regulating, right? Self-regulation of the medical field. If any of the panel has any ideas, I know I heard, I heard ideas about going back to the Health Licensing Board, having the claims heard there, and being that, I mean, there's some issues with that too as well, where we're such a small community, it's very difficult to find perhaps expertise to objectively process claims. So I'm interested to hearing the panel, what ideas that you have for self-regulation, because we know that, we want to be able to address those individuals that perhaps have done negligence, right? You know, I'm sure that's in the best interest of the medical community is to correct that, correct that issue that can cause more harm to our patients, right? I'm sure that's in the interest of all of us here. But at the same time, what is the way forward for self-regulating? Yeah, what's a way we can improve that? Thank you.
Honorable Senator.
Dr. Mariano.
Thank you for letting me speak. First of all, I just want to make a clarification about what I said in my speech, because it's, I'm sorry, that is Mr. Lubovski's impression of what I said, but about the weeds comment, I just wanted to be very clear and on the record. I said true cases of malpractice are the few weeds. What I meant are those providers who commit true acts of malpractice. I do not mean, and I was not referring in any way, to the victims. Please. Thank you for letting me speak.
Perhaps I can direct the question to Dr. Leon Garo, because I know you mentioned in your testimony about reforms in the States.
Well, I know that for self-improvement and regulation, we have morbidity and mortality conferences that we have within our Department of Surgery, and that's held every other month. This is where doctors come together and we dissect if something went wrong, even if it's a minor problem, a major problem, an adverse event, and especially every single death that occurs. We hold each other accountable, and if we find that there are things that need to be rectified, we have those surgeons rectify the situation, whether with additional training or supervision, et cetera. That's what we do in surgery. I'll let other docs chime in on how they self-regulate.
Dr. Yessi here.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to answer Senator Perez's question regarding self-regulation on Guam. It already exists. It's called the Licenseur Board. The Licenseur Board is run by Public Health, and the members of the Licenseur Board is, guess who confirms them? You guys. Okay? So you guys have the opportunity to say yes or no to an individual who is going to be on this regulatory board. The person is basically chosen by the governor, but it's up to the legislature to approve the board. And so to answer your question, this board is the way things happen in the States. There is an organization called FARB, Federated Something About Boards. It's all about educating board members, F-A-R-B. And I think it's good that if you can kind of research that a little bit, but also if you can research on GCA, I think it's under health, under medical licenses and medical practice. It'll describe how a board is selected and how they are confirmed and how they should regulate us. Thank you.
Dr. Ergen?
Sure. Just to add to it, to the licensing boards, to the morbidity and mortality conferences, there's peer review, there's putting resources into patient investigations that has been mentioned, putting resources into educating the public, so preventative health, educating the public from childhood, right? Elementary school, lifestyle modifications, maximizing outpatient resources so they're not showing up to the hospital very sick.
Thank you for the response. Something that I'm very interested in, Dr. Nguyen, is the role that you play, and I really like the idea of more of the holistic type of approach. And how does that, I guess the question that you had is, how does that stand up to standard of care when you're dealing with more of the pioneering type of medicine, right? More of the integrative medicine in which standard of care is not necessarily developed? So, I mean, that's a very interesting concept to think about and consider, so I do appreciate your testimony and everybody's testimony here. The other thing that, I guess, one of the things I want to comment on is, Guam has been definitely disadvantaged healthcare-wise, and it just seems that we've been left behind as the state has developed more technologically, more specialties are being developed, Guam is left far behind. And then seeing that, a lot of you here that testified that you've gone beyond the scope to cover the gaps, and that's something that needs to be considered. And again, this idea of how does one distinguish between an outcome that is due to malpractice and an outcome because, for other reasons? And I think these are ideas that we need to bring back and consider in looking over this bill. So I appreciate everybody's testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Titekwe?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the panel that's here tonight. I just want to say to Tia, I'm really sorry that, you know, those words, it's, you know, being bullied like that. I just want to say I'm really sorry you should not be called, you know, those names that you mentioned earlier to you. You don't deserve it, and I really am sorry that you had to hear something like that, and I appreciate all that you do here on the island.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Moving forward, I think it's important to recognize that we're, as a community, are perpetuating this, and so if we continue to do so, I just think it's going to be even more difficult to recruit healthcare providers in the future unless we just put a stop to this type of environment and toxicity now.
I appreciate your testimony. I just have one question, Madam Speaker. I think I'll direct this to Dr. Leon Garo. You mentioned you were practicing in the States before you came to Guam.
No, I came straight to Guam after finishing fellowship.
The reason why I wanted to ask if anybody has practiced in the States before they came to Guam. Okay, then I'll direct this question to you. At what point, being that you were practicing in the States, but maybe would give you more, give me more of an insight of, at what point, well, no, I'll go back to this. In the US mainland, does doctors practicing in rural areas usually practice medicine beyond the scope of their training in rural areas?
That's possible, Senator, but I just cannot speak from experience because I worked in an urban area. I worked for three years after residency in an urban town in Wisconsin, and I did not have that experience. I worked in a town that had 120,000 people, and we had four hospitals, large ones, so it has not been my experience.
Because it kind of led me to my next question, but maybe I can ask Dr. Leon Garo, because she did mention something about not practicing out of the scope of your training. At what point do you draw the line to determine if a patient needs to be seen by a specialist?
Eighteen years of training teaches me where I draw the line for myself. It's not uncommon that I'll see a patient and they beg me, doc, just today, doc, can you do this surgery for me? And I will tell them, I can. I can do the surgery for you. I know how. And I will tell them, "I can, I can do the surgery for you, I know how, I did thirty of these cases in my training, but I won't, because if you were me, if I, you were my mother, my father, my sister, my brother, I would tell you, for this specific surgery, you want someone who does this surgery fifty times a month, not once every four years." And so, we have to, and I also consult with my colleagues, say, "Hey, you know, what would you do?" Send them off island, because we have to, we have to recognize our own limitations. And it's training that teaches me what I can and what I can't do, and it's this bill which will tell me what I can and can't do.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much. Senator Nelson?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I have to tell you, I mean, Tia, your comments that you made, certainly there is an underlying negativity that exists on this issue. We have a population, and there are many people in the community that are concerned. You know, this is often, you know, I was raised in this community, as many of us were, that that concern exists among our people. And it's how do we bring this together? How do we bring this dissension and negativity? Because it's working both ways. When we have a member of the legislature that has sponsored this bill, that's being told by their physician, "I will no longer provide service to you." Before this bill is even on the floor of the legislature and debated, maybe it will or will not become law. That's very direct, that's very threatening, and that can be threatening to any of us here, to our families as well, so this is not something that you should feel alone with. We get attacked all the time. Maybe it's the nature of the job that we do. But I do have to tell you that this is not an issue that, whether this bill moves forward or not, it's not going to make the underlying issues of concern that this community has in wanting to ensure that they have good, safe, reliable healthcare. We recognize we're a small island community. All of us can leave, all of us that have resources can get on a plane and move somewhere else and live in another community and just be as capable and as successful. I appreciate the fact that all of you, for some of you that have, were born and raised here and have chose to come back and invest on the island, for those of you that have come here and wanted to make your career here, we don't devalue the work that you do, but we certainly would want to make sure that if we have a physician practicing out there that has been negligent, that has harmed someone directly, that has been irresponsible in the practice of their profession, that there's recourse for the victim. If your argument is, "Well, we don't want to enrich attorneys," maybe we have a whole room of attorneys here are going to be upset that we're saying, "Oh, we want to reduce your arbitration cost." I mean, seriously, there has to be a middle ground, and if you're saying, "Well, this is not what we believe will work for us in the medical community," then what compromise can be brought to the table that will address that very concern? So that we don't have individuals, because this could be you, you're right, you could be the doctor today and the patient tomorrow, inevitably, even in the best of health. If we live long enough, we're all going to be a patient at some point to someone, even if we are a doctor. And we've seen doctors in this community that have invested their whole lives, that you think they should be ready to retire and die from cancer and other illnesses that everyone else is afflicted with. So while we argue and debate, while we accuse and we attack, because that has happened, I sit here and I'm just dumbfounded, again, another issue this week I'm dumbfounded by, that this is a level of dialogue and engagement, the accusatory attitude, like, "How dare you guys raise this to us in the profession?" And we're sitting here going, "How dare you ignore the concerns of our people that feel they have no recourse." Most of you are all, you can say, "We're all good physicians, we didn't get into this field to harm anyone, we came in to heal the community that we live and work in." But what do we do to address those cases when they do happen? What recourse do our people have? Because this is not unique to Guam. If you're going to move somewhere else, is it a perfect system in a larger community in the mainland where you have the resources, you have the specialists, you have the money of that economy there that can sustain that? Yes, maybe practice would be a lot easier. We're going to have disadvantages living in a small island community. We have the pluses of living out here, but also, obviously, in the areas of medical care, the disadvantage is by virtue of our size, just by virtue of our economy, just by virtue of the fact that a number of our people are never going to have the type of financial resources to fight a case, even if they, they wanted to, even if they had a legitimate case. Because the whole process, no matter how you go through it, is going to cost money, money most people don't have. So I think we need to look at that debate and have that discussion, rather than the attacks and the sense of, "Oh, you're taking up my time and you're irritating me." Because while you might be thinking that of us, I'm sitting here on the side of the table thinking that as well, and we have people, there are constituents, whether we get elected or not, we can attack each other, "Really, at this stage in my life, please, set me free, set me free." And I don't have to worry about the rest of the community. So I think if you feel that this is not satisfactory, the mechanism here opens up litigation, even though I know the Speaker has repeatedly, repeatedly said, "This doesn't remove arbitration from the current law that exists now, this provides another option." But if the fear is that Guam is going to become more litigious and attorneys are going to be threatening left and right, then what is the alternative that gives this community some comfort that for any, for those, because it does exist, you will know it among yourselves probably better than us? If negligence has happened out there where the standard of care has not been met, how do we address that? And how many cases actually, does anyone know in recent history, beyond the victims coming out, coming forth and saying, "We have no recourse"? Has any action been taken against anyone in the medical, medical field who has been negligent among your peers? What action has been taken against them? What public accountability has been brought forth in our community to address that? So, I mean, I hope we move forward in a positive way that we can come to some consensus within this community, because I'm sure, even if you move somewhere else, there's still going to be malpractice issues. Where else do you get this level of protection? Where else in the United States, if that's the option or the choice, to go back or move somewhere else? Are we free of these issues? We're not. But for Guam, how do we come to a medium ground that we can come to, not going to make everybody happy, but at least the majority on both sides of the aisle have some sense of comfort, that, you know, these issues can be properly addressed, and that victims, those have been victimized, have recourse? Because if you're dealing with a family member, a child, if this was your child, this was your mother, your father, your loved one that you care for, of course, you're going to want, you want to want to have some sense to make sure if they've done, if a medical practitioner has done something negligent, that they're not going to do that to somebody else. And if they have done it, what is the recourse to the community? Where is the recourse to the community to feel some sense of justice?
Colleagues, my apologies.
No, I understand, Madam Speaker.
No, we have to reset the, we have to reset the programming, so my apologies, and I know that there's a panel that is still waiting very impatiently, and we need to get them in here as soon as we can, but, so we're going to reset the panel, we have to take a recess, my apologies.